Good morning. The May 5th, 2021 virtual meeting of County Council is now in session. This morning, we will hear from a variety of departments regarding the proposed FY22 budget. Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Volkey.
Present.
Oh, there you are. Good. Mr. Pruski.
Here.
Ms. Fiedler.
Present.
Ms. Radvian. Notice, Ms. Hare.
Present.
Ms. Pickard.
Present.
Ms. Lacy. Notice, Ms. Bowler, our county auditor.
Present.
Madam Chair, we have all seven present and our county auditor.
Thank you. Please pause for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance to be led here.
Good morning. Let us be thankful for this day that we have been given, for its blessings, its opportunities, its challenges. May we appreciate and use each day that comes to us to the best of our abilities through collaboration and kindness. Let us seek strength and guidance for each day's duties and problems, and be challenged to give our best always together. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the Open Meetings Act statement.
County Attorney has asked me to read the following statement. The Maryland Open Meetings Act is a state law that requires public meetings to be open to the public and to be held in places reasonably accessible to individuals who would like to attend these meetings. The virtual format of this meeting of the County Council is due to the COVID-19 pandemic and is necessary in light of the serious health risks associated with public gatherings. While a virtual meeting of this type was not envisioned by the Open Meetings Act, steps have been taken to ensure that this virtual meeting includes alternate accessibility features that the Open Meetings Act Compliance Board and the courts have reviewed and approved, such as having a call-in phone number that allows anyone with a telephone to call and listen to the meeting and broadcasting the meeting with video and audio on cable TV and the Internet. The public access provided by this technology makes this virtual meeting
We need an answer for that.
Reasonably accessible. Excuse me, reasonably accessible to the public as required by the Open Meetings Act. This technology also satisfies the intent of the rules and procedure of the County Council that apply to meetings, and they do not need to be waived in order for this virtual meeting to be held.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Is there any item any council member would like to place on the agenda this morning? Seeing none, may I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution or minutes? It's whole.
Councilman Pickard so moved.
Is there a second?
There, a second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Secretary, please read the titles of any bills to be introduced this morning.
Bill number 5021, an emergency ordinance concerning proclamation of civil emergency in Anarongo County termination.
Thank you. We will begin today's budget presentation with the police department. All presenters, please remember to introduce yourself and to continue to identify each time. Today's lead presenter is, of course, our chief. Howard. And I don't know who else you have with you, Chief, so.
Yes, I'll make the introduction. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
My name is Amal Howard to all who have not had the pleasure of meeting. To our esteemed council, good morning. In the room with me this morning, I have our fiscal manager, Mr. Henry Farrell, and I have our commander of Bureau of Patrol, Major Katie Goodwin. Thank you for your time this morning as we present to you our FY22 proposed budget. You've heard me speak of our department's vision and focus moving forward this year, described as our three Cs, community policing, crisis intervention, and communications. And throughout our budget presentation, those three themes you'll hear reflected in our asks. And just, you know, in advance, we appreciate your consideration and support. And I will turn the presentation piece over to Mr. Farrell.
Good morning, all. For the record, Henry Farrell. I would advise that you will have the proposed current budget book in front of you. The police department starts on page 261 of that book with a mention of our mission statement, some comments about some of our accomplishments throughout the year, our continued focus on community outreach, number of hours of service provided by our reserve officers and chaplains and volunteers, some mention of our narcotics and special operations investigations, as well as a number of animals that were adopted throughout the year. Also mentioned as bullet points are our key objectives. The next page, page 262, is a comparative statement of expenditures. This being the largest department in the county at over 178 million and 26 different business units, there's a tremendous amount of activity and detail that make up that 178 million. I'd like to try to make some sense of that table for you, if I could. You see the numbers, 178.3 million dollars broken down in three ways on that chart, by fund, by character, and by object. Let's first take a quick look at the fund. You can see the general fund being the only fund that has an increase of 16.6 million. I'll get to that detail a little bit when we get down to the object categories to explain the makeup of that increase. A forfeit and asset seizure fund has a decrease of $400,000. The grant fund is a decrease of 457, and the BLT or Video Lottery Local Impact Fund is a decrease of $55,000. When you look at the numbers in the center of the table by character, it's very difficult to make any sense of those. The reason is because, an example, in the beginning of a budget year last year, we may have had 50 to 70 positions in patrol services that through attrition have been vacated and moved into the Admin Services Bureau where the Training Academy is located. So those numbers shift tremendously based on the time when the snapshots made to print this table out. So it doesn't make a lot of sense to look at the numbers. We can scroll through the detailed pages later and see the activities that are going on within those bureaus, however. So let's focus on the object changes. That's where the detail is, and that's where we can make the most sense of what's new or different in the department's budget this year. The personal services, you see an increase of almost $15 million. In that detail is a $9 million increase in salaries and wages that equates to a 1.5% cost of living adjustment and a roughly 3% merit increase on the anniversary date. I say roughly 3% because civilians are at 3% and sworn are at 3.5%, so it's roughly right at 3% there. There is also a $7 million increase in pension costs in this department for this year. My understanding is the county has lowered their discount rate, which means the county's contribution will need to be higher in that line item. I feel like that's something you're going to see in every department that comes before you. So in addition to those two main items, there's also $760,000 in six new position. Of course, I'll get to that detail when we get to the personnel summaries. There is a decrease in our contractual service line this year of $260,000, and that basically amounts to the shifting of our contribution to the mental health agency. The cost hasn't changed. The payment amount is the same. It's just been moved to a different line. It's now down in the grants and contributions line. The supplies and materials is an increase of a little over $130,000. A variety of safety items in here, including the cost of tasers. The business and travel line, a little bit less than $100,000 increase. There are many changes in that category. There's roughly $187,000 more in this category of business and travel for cultural diversity training, implicit bias training, and there are a variety of other decreases to offset that, which is why there's a little bit less than $100,000 increase. The capital outlay, you can see a $980,000 increase. The primary driver of that is a license plate reader project in the Laurel area of almost $700,000. And the remaining increase in there is the cost of outfitting new officers. I did already mention in the grants line, there's an increase of 127, but that is just a shifting of the mental health agency contribution. One thing I did want to mention to you in the budget column is that in the contractual services, I've been asked many times in the past, why is that number so big? $15.6 million. What is included in that $15.6 is roughly $11 million of vehicle expenses of operating and replacing vehicles, $1 million of phone expenses, and another $1 million in radios and firing range repairs. And it's just a tremendous variety of other items. So the next page, page 263, in the summary of budgeted positions in the classified service, I mentioned earlier that there were six new positions. They are four police officers for the crisis intervention team, one is a sergeant, three officers, and then there are two civilian positions added to animal control this year. That is the makeup of the $760,000 increase in new positions. And that takes us to a level of 781 sworn officers. The next few pages, as I mentioned, are basically by character or bureau layout. Page 264 shows you the Patrol Services Bureau. The numbers, as I mentioned, are a little difficult to make sense of because they change so much from year to year. But as you look at the next three pages, you can look down the left-hand side and see all the different units that make up each one of those bureaus. Page 267 is the forfeiture and asset seizure fund, also known as the FAST fund. And you can see a decrease of $400,000. The decrease is made up of expenses to rent covert vehicles, and we have moved that out of the FAST fund and into the general fund due to a lack of revenue, and there is a $0 fund balance in this fund. So we're moving this expense into the general fund until this fund can start accommodating it again. The next page, pages 268 and 69 are the classified service personnel summaries, where you can see the six position increase. And page 270 shows you the exempt position summary. There were two positions added during the current fiscal year, but none added to the FY22 budget. That concludes my comments on the operating budget. If there are any questions, I would like to address them at this time. If not, we can move on to the police department's capital program, which in your capital budget book, project class summary starts on page three.
Sir, I think we'll fingers at page three and ask questions about the operating budget. Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District 3. Appreciate the presentation. Thank you all for being here with us this morning. Wanted to follow up on the number of sworn officers. I think you said 781 is the staffing level that you are at now. How does that compare to where we're going? Because I know over the past few budgets, we've traditionally been adding somewhere in the vicinity of 20 officers per year. And this year, it looks like we are only really adding, I'm seeing three police officers and one sergeant, so four. So how does that compare year over year, and where does that put us in terms of the staffing model that we're trying to get to? Because I know we had, for a long time, heard how understaffed we were and how we needed more police officers, but I'm not seeing that in the budget this year. So have we made it, or what's our situation?
Yeah, we're actually far from that. The IACP study, I think that's what you're referring to. Mentioned somewhere in this zone of 820 officers is what we needed to get the job done. We will be at, I believe, when I say 781 after this budget is done. So a considerable amount of work still needs to be done to get there. And I guess I want to mention that 820 means 820 warm bodies in spots fulfilling assignments. We, by the nature of police work, have roughly 30 to 40 people every day that can't work, like duty, military leave, variety of reasons. But so when you consider that, you know, that puts the number around 850. So we have a lot of work to do to get there.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you. Nathan Volkey, District 3, again. Thank you for that answer. I appreciate that. So how many positions did you all ask for in the budget in terms of police officers to get to that staffing level?
Yeah, so that's a short question and a long answer. The truth is that when we sit down here in November and talk to our unit commanders, we get somewhere in the neighborhood of 40 to 50 requests for new positions. Knowing that's not affordable, we need to send something reasonable down to the administration. And that number was in the 16 to 20 zone, if I remember correctly.
I have to say, that wasn't a very long answer compared to some we've heard, so I'm a little caught off guard. Ms. Radvian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lisa Radvian, District 6. So I was just curious, does this result in a lot of overtime? Or how do you feel, you know, if you're sort of below your staffing needs? How do you manage? Do we just have less coverage? Or what's the result? We have more people working longer hours? How do you work it?
You were right. The primary driver of filling those spots is overtime. If you look at our overtime expenses, they are considerable. It certainly is on a case-by-case basis, though, and it's very unit-specific, depending on the crime trend at the time and so forth. We just don't have, we just don't fill every spot with overtime. There's, you know, minimum staffing and so forth that is taken into consideration. So yes, the primary driver is overtime, but that's not always the answer. Of course, it doesn't have to always be filled by overtime, depending on the assignment.
Ms. Fiedler, I'm sorry if I was supposed to call on you before. Your hand blended into your background, and I only just saw it, so sorry.
No, no, you're fine. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. I just wanted to try out the hand, and I noticed that as well, so I'll be returning to my yellow flag. Just a quick question. I thought I heard animal control officer mentioned, but then I don't see it showing up in the personnel summary. Did I mishear you?
I mentioned that there were two civilian positions added to animal control, not an animal control officer, but a management assistant in administration and a police, I'm sorry, public services dispatcher to dispatch the officers.
Wonderful. Thank you. And I just want to correct myself. Animal care and control. Thank you.
Mr. Pruski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilman Pruski, District 4. I thought it was interesting, the line of conversation, the people were talking about staffing. I know that our applicants are down. It's a difficult time to be a police officer. I actually had an interaction the other day with somebody from our recent recruit class, and we need to support our chief by, obviously, the community conversation and building our relationships. And I would say to my colleagues, too, that when we vote for the budget, that we are voting for resources, and it does take time, obviously, to get a training class, the body cameras we're investing in. So again, when we have that vote on the budget and we're giving resources, our vote should follow our actions. But I do have a question for the chief, and I know you've talked about this a little bit, but just overall, how can we recruit better? I know that we put signs up. I know in my district, you know, kind of messages, hey, you want to join the police department. Are we reaching out to maybe some of our schools with our youth and some of our other communities? But maybe that might be a question that you could address overall for local recruitment. Obviously, we want local folks. Obviously, we're increasing pay, which we should continue to do because if we're competing with our other jurisdictions. But if you could maybe mention that, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pruski. Yes, I know that we have a very robust recruitment section. And yes, when you think about recruiting young people or incentivizing or inspiring young people to pursue a career in public safety, we're doing the right things as a department. You think about all of the youth engagement activities that we partake in with our young folks. You think about our Police Explorer program. We have many opportunities. We have young cadets who work here right now. So the outreach piece is there for us. Our SROs stand in the schools. And quite frankly, we can put up billboards and we can post on social media, but the best recruitment tool is ourselves. And we go out and talk to folks, and we encourage people, young and sometimes seasoned like myself, to join our department. All departments, I'll say quite frankly right now, are experiencing challenges with recruitment. You've got agencies placing signage and billboards in, you know, one another's jurisdictions. That's unprecedented. We don't do that. So recruitment, we know over the years, has been an issue for all departments throughout the country. And Maryland, we're no different. But I know that we're very proactive about, you know, bringing to Anarongo County particularly local residents, but folks who are passionate about service and helping people. So, and we'll continue in those efforts.
Do any of my colleagues have more questions on the operating side specifically? Ms. Pickard.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. This is Allison Pick.
Ms. Pickard, if you can hear us, we've lost you. Okay, I think we're going to need to come back to Ms. Pickard at a later time. Chief Howard, if you'd like to have your department continue on the capital side, we'll come back.
Yes, ma'am. And if I may, it's probably storm-related. We can hear it outside of our window.
Mine, too, just now.
Okay, we'd like to move on to the capital improvement program. The project class summary is on page three of 29. And it mentions the only two positions we have in the upcoming budget. The first being Project F5751, the Evidence and Forensic Science Unit. Three of the four units that are currently in here are in roughly 30-year-old trailers, evidence collection and crime lab and property management. And the new section that will be housed here is a forensic firearm lab, which we're currently driving to Prince George's County to utilize that service. As you can see, there's prior funding of $8 million, and the construction, the design and engineering has already begun on this project, and the construction dollars of almost $25 million are in the next year's FY22 program. The other project is F5806, the Police Special Operations Facility, and this will house equipment storage, K-9 set training, and QRT training, which now is being done in Glen Burnie at the old BNA facility. This will put a new facility near the Combined Services Support Complex in Millersville, next to our current K-9 center. And it'll be nice to have something close to home to be able to train where our people's offices are. So we're grateful for that project. As you can see, there's a half million dollars in design and engineering prior approved, and roughly $7 million in construction for '22. And that is it for us in the capital program.
Ms. Pickard? Are you ready to ask a question now? Again?
Did you not even hear my question?
Nope. We are Miss Pick, you know, Allison Pick. That's all we heard.
It's fine. We can move along. It's fine. I'll ask it separately. Thank you.
No, I'm saying now is the time to ask because we just finished the capital. So capital questions and general questions are welcome.
Oh, okay. I was just trying to ascertain how many sworn officers we have had the opportunity to add since the 2021 and now with the 2022 budget. I was just looking at page, I think it's on 269. I'm looking at, just to get a sense of where we started and where we are now.
I guess I don't understand your question. We're moving, we're adding four officers to the budget in '22. Is that what you're asking?
All right. Yes, I know we're adding four, but how many did we add in 2020 and then in 2021?
Oh, so 2021 was only one. And I believe there was somewhere in the neighborhood of seven to 10 in '20.
Thank you.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. I don't know who this question is appropriate for, but just wanted an update on the Joint Fire and Police 911 Center. I know it's been discussed broadly. I don't think it's in this budget with the CIP number, but if I'm wrong, it may be a budget department question.
So, yeah, so it is not included this year. We intend to include it for next year's, I'm sorry, for next year's, for 2023. It's certainly a priority for us. Most recently, the county exec did come down to headquarters to tour our 911 center. He received a very robust overview of the need, and he supports it. So we will be presenting that to you for FY2023.
Madam Chair, if I may follow up?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. I appreciate that information. And just to my colleagues, last year around this time, I took a tour of headquarters to understand the needs in some of these capital improvement projects. Absolutely fascinating. So I appreciate the time that was given and encourage everyone to get out there and take a look if you have the time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Sarah Lacy, District 1. I have a question for the chief. In the past, there's been some discussion of the possibility of adding another police district or realigning the existing district in order to, district boundaries, in order to perhaps better serve the westernmost part of the county, which I know is, the western district police station is in Severn, but that means there can be some long response times, especially getting down to Maryland City and Laurel. Excuse me, does this budget include any dollars toward that? Or has there been any further planning toward that goal?
It does not include funding for that right now. That is also part of our asks in the future. We understand the demands in the western, and we've had the discussion about creating a fifth district to respond to those needs. But I know that we prioritize right now the 911 center simply because we're the only county operating under older methods and where other counties have moved to a joint 911 center. So we want to get that up and standing, and then that fifth district will also be an ask for us in the future.
Great, thank you. Does anyone else have any questions for our police? Does anyone else have any questions for our police department? We're quite a bunch this morning, mostly. Okay, well, seeing none, thank you all very much for coming, taking the time, uh, to present to us. And, um, have a wonderful rest of your day. Stay safe out there.
Thank you, we appreciate your time and your consideration and support.
Absolutely. Madam Secretary, if you would, bring in our presenters for our fire department. We have Chief Tricia Wolford, Ross Dinkle, Lisa Mayers, and Shannon Cleary-Holt. And I apologize if I have mispronounced any names.
Good morning, great to see everyone.
Good morning, likewise, please go ahead and roll into your presentation.
I think we will begin with our budget analyst, uh, Hannah Dyer.
Uh, good morning, I'm Hannah Dyer from the Budget Office, um, and I'm just going to give a brief summary of the department's budget book pages, uh, before turning it back over to them. So the fire department can be found on pages two-seventy-one through two-seventy-seven of the proposed budget book. And I'm going to focus on the comparative statement of expenditures, which is on page two-seventy-two. The proposed budget for the fire department totals a hundred sixty-point-three million, and all but about ten million of that is general funds. And this is an increase of twenty-five million from the fiscal twenty-one original budget. And as you can see at the bottom of this chart, um, in the object summary, the increase is driven largely by personnel costs, which is about, uh, nineteen million of that increase. Uh, and there are several factors that, uh, drive this increase, including the pay package increases, the continuation of the SAFER grant, um, and an increase in the number of paramedics that are trained in fiscal twenty-two. And then there are a couple other notable object increases shown on this chart. Uh, the first one is capital outlay, which has an increase of about three-point-six million, and this is for apparatus replacement. And then the last line on this chart, um, grants, contributions and other increases by about two-point-one million. And this is related to the county portion of the SAFER grant. So with that, I'll turn it back over to the department to go into a bit more detail about the budget highlights.
Thank you, Hannah, uh, good morning, great to see all council members. I'd like to quickly introduce my team, uh, Deputy Chief Ross Dinkle, who has managed the budget for us for many, many years. Uh, he is here with us. We're making a transition, we have a new promotion in the department with their recent retirement. Uh, so the promotion of our newest Deputy Chief Lisa Mayers, who will be taking over the budget, so she's joining us for her first hearing. Um, and then also with the Shannon Cleary-Holt, uh, who joined us over a year ago to help with budget. So that is the Fire Department Budget Team. Um, after introductions, I just want to say that, um, the request was to make things concise and short and sweet and to get right to questions, um, from any of the council members. This budget for the fire department was about needs and not about wants. Uh, the things that we have requested, uh, for our fiscal year are things that require us to maintain the current level of service we are already providing to our community members. Um, so with that, the fire department is open for conversation of any of the budget items or any questions you may have for us.
Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Jessica Hare, District Seven, um, thank you all for your presentation, thanks for being here. Chief, uh, the comment we just heard about the personal services increasing by a substantial amount, it included both pay package and our, now it sounds like payment of, a portion at least of SAFER grant, uh, salaries. And I'm wondering if you can just tell me, how many, um, firefighters are we now taking on a portion of their salary for the SAFER grant? And are we at the, we're at the twenty-five percent or the fifty percent mark, just break that down for me.
Sure, um, I'll answer the, uh, portion of the firefighters and then I'll have Shannon answer the breakdown of the, the payments. So originally, if you recall, the SAFER grant was for seventy firefighters. Uh, we agreed for the acceptance of fifty, uh, and fifty will be where we are maintaining and staying, those twenty will be returned. So the, the fifty is what is being covered by the SAFER grant and Shannon can cover the payments for that.
Sure, Shannon Cleary-Holt, um, Fire Department. So with the SAFER grant, we've just completed the end of grant year one, it went from March ten, uh, March, excuse me, March eleventh of two thousand twenty through March tenth of two thousand twenty-one. Um, for that period, we received seventy-five percent was federal funding, twenty-five percent county funding. That will be the same breakdown for this year, so again, that'll be through March of this year, twenty, twenty-one through twenty-two. And then the following year, we will go down to thirty-five percent federal funding and sixty-five percent county funding.
So if I understand you correctly, then, sorry, Jessica Hare, District Seven, we, this, this nineteen million dollars or twenty million dollars in, in personal services includes twenty-five percent of the cost of those fifty SAFER grant firefighters.
So some of that will be in the grant contribution, Hannah, can you help me speak to this?
Yeah, so this is Hannah Dyer from the Budget Office again. So actually, all of the, uh, personnel costs related to SAFER are included in the personal services line of this chart, because this chart shows total funds for the department. Um, so I think for fiscal twenty-two, it's about four million dollars for the total cost, county and, uh, federal for that, those fifty firefighters. Um, so the other, I mean, that, that, I think that answers your, your SAFER portion of the question, it's four million. The, the con, grants contribution in other line is the county funding portion, so that goes into that four million, um, increase for, um, which is for SAFER in the personal services line.
Great, thank you so much.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Nathan Volkey, District Three, um. So I have a couple of questions, but I'll, I'll just start to follow up on something that Councilwoman Hare was asking about. So do I understand correctly that the cost of fifty firefighters under the SAFER grant at twenty-five percent is four million dollars? So the total cost that we would expect to see, I guess two budgets from now would be sixteen million, is that? Am I getting that right, or am I doing the math wrong?
So this is Hannah Dyer from the Budget Office again, the four million is actually the total salary cost for all fifty of those firefighters.
Okay.
Um, so I'm just looking at my notes here to see the fund split. For fis, for the fiscal twenty-two budget, the county portion, and as Shannon mentioned earlier, um, fiscal twenty-two is when we have the change in the funding split between the federal government and the county. Um, but overall, for fiscal twenty-two, the county portion of that four million is about half, about two million. And the federal reimbursement portion is about two million.
Okay, Madam Chair, if I may?
Go ahead.
Thank you, so then just to follow up on that, I guess this is where I'm getting confused about the seventy-five-twenty-five versus sixty-five-thirty-five split and where the federal versus the county money comes in. So if we're really a fifty-fifty split, is there something that we're paying in addition to the salary cost that's increasing that personnel cost? Why is it fifty-fifty as opposed to it being like a seventy-five-twenty-five or, or a sixty-five-thirty-five?
Sorry, this is Shannon Cleary-Holt, Fire Department. Um, part of that is that the SAFER grant funds at the base salary. So any salary in an excess of the base salary, the county will be responsible for.
And this is Hannah Dyer from the Budget Office, so that, that is one factor definitely. The other thing is that the grant years and the fiscal years don't align. So the grant starts in March, it, the grant year changes in March of each year. So for fiscal twenty-two, we have a mix of a period of, um, seventy-five percent and a, a period of thirty-five percent.
Mr. Volkey, did you, oh, there goes your hand, okay. I'll come back to you, Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Jessica Hare, District Seven, um. We actually, someone just asked this of the police department and I thought it was helpful. How many, um, positions did you ask for this year in the budget? I know similar to the police department, the fire department has been trying to increase staffing to make sure we get to that for, uh, four people on each, um, piece of apparatus, and I'm trying to see how we're doing on that.
So operationally speaking, again, just to go back to the SAFER grant, um, we could have definitely used those twenty additional. Um, when we had to make that decision, we were just at the, uh, beginning of COVID and trying to understand fiscally how we would manage our resources. Um, so we declined those twenty positions, knowing I would rather decline those than have to, uh, consider layoffs or furloughs for anyone currently employed. Uh, so while we desperately still need those twenty positions in the field, we shifted our focus to how do we support a staff of almost a thousand firefighters, we're at about nine-hundred-and-eighty-one, uh, along with the volunteers of about five-hundred operational. So our requests were made for staff positions. I believe Shannon or Hannah has that request of those staff positions. Majority of those were coming from our logistics or our training department.
So we, our, the current budget contains two new positions, I do not have the full list of other positions that we entertained adding to this budget.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Feedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Amanda Feeder, District Five, just a quick question on the personnel summary chart on pages two-seventy-six, really just two-seventy-six, and if you answer this question, I, um, or this, I do apologize, but there is a reduction of twenty-four, um, firefighter two.
Correct, so the, the twenty are the safer twenty that we're returning. Um, and then the four that we have, which are currently in a firefighter grade, those are the upgrades that you see for the position for the battalion chief.
That's where they are, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Nathan Volkey, District Three, um. So the capital outlay on page, looks like it's two-seventy-two, indicates that by object, it's a three-point-five-million-dollar outlay. But in the budget highlights that we received, it, it indicates that it's a five-point-four-million-dollar investment. And I think that's true, Chief, I appreciate you sending over the apparatus plan, uh, for the next few years that you sent to us. So is there money somewhere else that is adding into that, is it in the capital program or am I missing it here? Where's the other two million?
Uh, this is Hannah Dyer from the Budget Office, the amount, um, that you probably received in the budget highlights, uh, was for the total investment in fiscal twenty-two for the, the fleet replacement. The increase that you see in the right mo, most column of this page, um, is just the increase, not the total investment.
Makes sense, thank you.
Um, I have a couple of questions, nobody else has a flag up at the moment. Um, all right, Sarah Lacy, District One, um, Chief, I read through your annual report, which is very slick, very cool, um, very, very modern. Um, I noticed that one of the things mentioned in there was, uh, providing, that in this past year, we were providing an extra set of uniforms for all uniformed personnel. Um, could you clarify, who's included in uniformed personnel? I had a hard time understanding what that meant.
Sure, um, I believe that's in reference to polo shirts, does, does that sound familiar? The, there's either two aspects of it, so was it clothing or PPE that you're asking about?
Um, it was like a entirely second set of a uniform.
Uh, okay, so it's a, a PP, so it's a second set of turnout gear, the turnout gear is what we wear to structure fires or, uh, MVC extracations. So the second set of gear was, uh, worked on for a couple of years. We do that to provide, um, for our firefighters to be able to go to one incident if they have, um, smoke, blood, carcinogenic materials that they can launder that, which needs to be laundered in a certain manner. And then they are still ready and active in service. So at this point, we have just finished up our, uh, career members and we're working on a package that would allow our volunteers, based on the volunteers that are actively running calls in an operational capacity. So that's something that we're working towards right now.
Okay, um, that makes sense, so what, what do you mean by working on a package, what does that currently entail?
So we, uh, the cost of the gear is incredibly expensive, um, and it has a shelf life on it. Um, so say that shelf life is five years, we want to make sure that the money we're going to invest for our volunteers is going to be gear that is going to be used and not stored in a locker or kept in a trunk, so that we're making sure to manage our county taxpayers' dollars. Um, so we're looking at, um, run volume, call volume, things like that. So again, we have administrative volunteers, which we know don't run calls, um, because that is not their role. The operational volunteers, we want to make sure that if we're going to issue two sets of gear, that it will actually be utilized in that manner, um, because there could be downtime for some of the volunteers if, say, they're writing one day a week, that they could go ahead and have time to launder it. The other thing that we offer for all of our members, career and volunteer, is we do have a gear exchange program. So everybody currently has access to two sets of gear. Um, we have additional, every size you can imagine gear at our quartermaster. And after a large-scale event such as a fire, um, they can go to the quartermaster, the quartermaster brings it to them. So there is still immediate replacement plan of a batch of gear that we have that everybody has access to for health and safety reasons. So we're just trying to figure out how to prioritize the payment of a second set of gear and making sure the shelf life doesn't burn out before the use life.
That makes sense, um, a second question I have, um, is about, there's a, an old fire engine at Ferndale and I was told that the, uh, department required that engine to be retired, um, due to, I guess, due to service life or whichever policies that, um, drive that. Um, and so Ferndale needed to purchase a new engine. And the county backed the financing for the engine, but apparently not the cost of maintenance of the engine, is that accurate?
Uh, that is, uh, somewhat accurate, the, the pieces of the story that you have are accurate, there are additional pieces. Um, currently, that station runs two pieces of apparatus, what we consider a frontline, um, which is within its normal run period and, uh, life of service. The secondary engine, uh, which when we look back at the data, does not run a lot of calls. Uh, I believe, and Chief Dinkle can probably correct me, we estimated about nine to fifteen runs in the previous year. Uh, is that correct?
That's correct, that's what the CAD data showed, correct.
So based on our CAD data from our call volume, uh, it, in, uh, three-hundred-and-sixty-five days, it ran between nine and twelve calls. Um, therefore, the funding mechanism on that piece, I need to make sure that I am putting all of our funding towards frontline pieces of apparatus that do run multiple calls. Um, as you can see by our request, we are in a world of hurt for apparatus and funding for maintenance and fuel and those types of things. So the request was denied because it's a secondary engine, not the primary engine, and the primary engine is still running numerous calls, then we do support that engine.
Okay, and it looks like nobody else has a question, but I have a third question, my turn to ask three questions. Um, uh, do you have, or does our fire department have, um, and in our dispatch policy, um, any parameters for, related to how far any particular piece of apparatus should be responding? You know, put aside a totally extraordinary event, but say on your, what you expect to be normal in the normal course of operations. Um, for example, and I'm told that the Ferndale engine may run, uh, all the way down to, into South County, which is quite far away from Ferndale, and that there had been some, uh, concerns there from some volunteers that they don't get to respond to calls close to home, which is where they volunteer. Um, so if you could speak to that, I'd be grateful.
Sure, I think, uh, first and foremost, actually with both of your questions, um, the thing that I like, the community, everyone to keep in mind, um, is this group, specifically me, is in charge of an entire system that protects an entire community. Um, and when I got here, I made sure that everybody was clearly aware that all of our members, career and volunteer, would be treated equally, but all of our citizens would be served as equal as possible. And if you're a part of this team and this system, we go where the need takes us, and sometimes it is not in our community. Um, there's a multitude of reasons for why that could potentially happen. Um, first of them would be based on, is it an emergent run, meaning lights and sirens? Or is it a non-emergent run? Uh, our volunteer crews are very gracious and offer transfer crews, so if we have a large incident going on in West County and then a second large incident comes up in South County, they will stand up a crew and offer to transfer to, say, Galesville or Deal, where you would normally never see a piece of apparatus from, uh, Ferndale or Glen Burnie. Um, so that would be a non-emergent run because they're not going down there lights and sirens. Sometimes our system is incredibly busy and people get pulled out of position, and that would be an example of maybe they do get pulled to a different community, uh, to service there. But the way our CAD is set up is that everything is GPS. So we make sure to take the closest piece of apparatus that has the proper assets to serve what emergency we need, and a lot of times that takes them out of a certain community area because they're within a closer range than potentially. because they're within a closer range than potentially that piece of apparatus that is known in that neighborhood.
Thank you. That's very helpful, and you certainly do have one of the most difficult jobs in the county.
And the greatest.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair Nathan Volkey, District Three. Uh, Chief, I just wanted to ask you similarly to how I asked the Police Department about this. Where are you in terms of career staffing? Where are you in terms of volunteer staffing? Based on where you are today and where you want to be, where did the fifty new positions from the Safer Grant put you in that sort of, uh, path, if you will, or plan? I just want to understand where we're going a little bit with this and, and what you need.
Um, so the fifty positions did put us, uh, in a much better position. We are obviously very grateful to have those and we are utilizing them in every district. So every district got an increase in staffing. Um, and the ability to, to be able to run apparatus for twenty-four hours versus just day work uh, or to have, um, national standards of staffing. So we did build a model that does incorporate those twenty. Um, I would like to be moving forward in whatever manner we can in the next couple of years to implement those twenty into our staffing plan, uh, that we have. So those twenty will be something that I, that I hope we can implement. On the volunteer side, nationally, every fire chief that has a combination or a volunteer department acknowledges it is incredibly hard to recruit volunteers. Uh, it really comes down to time and money and people having to work multiple jobs and raise children. And we know the requirements to be a firefighter are extremely difficult. Um, my commitment to the community is that no matter who shows up to their door, career or volunteer, we will provide the highest level of equally trained service. And so I have been insistent on that because our community deserves that. It's what they've always had. Um, and it's important that we make sure the medical and the suppression certifications are equal. So while I would always love to have more volunteers, I would love to have a consistent, steady pace from all of our volunteer stations. I also understand that they have full-time jobs and families, and we do what we can to hopefully have a, an additional truck or additional ambulance staffed when they're available. Um, but if you're willing to do the work, I'm willing to have you.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair Nathan Volkey, District Three. Chief, very much appreciate and understand that. And I, I don't think I've ever talked to a volunteer member of our fire department who would have it any other way, so I think they agree with you. Um, so I guess just kind of directly to my question of the staffing numbers, you said you've built a staffing plan based on the fifty and you've built a staffing plan based on the additional twenty. But I, you, you probably heard when the Police Department was in front of us, they have a target number that they want to get to, about eight hundred and seventy officers. Uh, eight hundred and fifty, excuse me. Where, where do you see the fire department needing to be in terms of firefighters, um, I guess, career members? And to what degree can you do things differently with the volunteers? Cause I, you, you and I have had many conversations about this before, about ways to incentivize, uh, being a volunteer a little bit more and, and kind of getting people in. Do you see anything that you all can do from your position to help incentivize folks to want to be volunteers? And then how does that impact that number of what you need?
So the first part of your question is, uh, that target number. Um, honestly, the target number fluctuates year to year, so we build that off of data we collect on where we see growth in communities. Um, if you look at the area off of Route Three, um, Watch Apple, Arundel, that area, as you see those communities being developed and grown, that's what starts adjusting our staffing models and our runtimes. So while we did project the seventy into a five-year staffing plan, which I believe you have from last year's budget, if not, I'm happy to send that. Um, it, it starts to alter and change, so I will never have one specific target number that goes past probably a year or two out based on the growth and development that happens in the county. Um, we foresee those twenty in future years to be able to help offset that. But we also know that we're having to build larger fire stations to put more assets in it. Twenty years ago, you could get away with an engine and an ambulance in one station. Our busier stations have two medic units, an engine and a truck. So we know resources and the complement of resources is going to continue to increase as our population increases. Uh, the second part of your question about the volunteers, um, there, there are numerous different ways to try and do that. The, the best thing for me, um, is to understand how the volunteers can commit to a timeframe, a certain amount of people, that would allow me to relieve a career schedule. If I don't have the commitment of specific times, um, days, things like that, I don't have the option to move a staffing model. Um, when crews show up at a volunteer capacity, we add it in as an extra piece, which is always great for our community members. But it won't relieve a staffing piece because I can't change the system that quickly in the moment and then appropriately redistribute.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair Amanda Fiedler, District Five. Um, Chief, I appreciate everything that you've shared here today. Just one more quick question from me on the Jones Station, Fire Station. I know at one point that was a station that, um, had some challenges as far as staffing. Have, has that department or that specific location reached staffing goals in, um, your view? Or is there an effort to, to continually address that specific fire station?
So right now, Jones Station is Station Twenty-three, uh, that's, um, off of Ritchie Highway. And that one is one that actually, um, really had a great outcome from the Safer Grant. That had the medical unit that was only on day work, Monday through Friday, and with the Safer Grant, we have moved that to a twenty-four hour, three sixty-five unit. Uh, so that is also our station for our special operations members. Those are highly trained members that do high angle rescue. Um, and a, a complement of hazmat, low angle, uh, confined space training. So for right now, we're, we're pretty happy with our staffing levels there. The big thing was the medical unit, and we got it there with the Safer Grant.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Ms. Picker, do you look like you want to ask a question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My internet is a little unstable, so I'm. So I know, uh, Chief Wolford, we've been working, um, towards staffing our apparatus with more individual firefighters. I think, I think we're up to three, um, riding on a truck. Can you, can you talk a little bit about that? And I know in other jurisdictions, you know, there are four and sometimes even five. Is that part of our goal to increase? Um, as we increase staffing, to increase those who are, you know, it's hard to drive a truck and, and pull a hose and all that kind of stuff. I learned a lot in Fire Ops one oh one.
Yes, ma'am. So the goal with the Safer Grant, which is, uh, uh, the goal that we reached was to make sure that we had, no longer had two-person engine companies or two-person truck companies. So we are at a staffing of three. Um, our special service peaches, pieces such as squads and trucks. Uh, my preference would be to be at a staffing level of four, and that was part of what that additional twenty would have helped us uh, get to. Along with that, we have to acknowledge that, you know, seventy-five percent of our call volume are medical calls. And we continue to need the increase in staffing of adding ambulances or adding additional medic units, which are ALS units. So that's where we're trying to get with our staffing, um, and we're happy with the progress we're making. Um, but at the same time, we can always do better.
Does anyone else have any questions for our fire department? Seeing none. We thank you guys for all that you do. Thank you for taking the time to be here and answer our questions. And, uh, thank you for, especially all your folks who put their lives on the line to save, save our citizens and we can't thank you enough. So thank you again. Have a great day.
Yeah, everybody have a great day.
Our next presentation is from the Sheriff's Office. Madam Secretary? Okay, great. We have Sheriff Jim Fredericks and Deputy Chief Frank Tuohy. You're muted, sir. We can't hear you.
How's that better?
Now we can hear you.
Okay, great. Uh, I have to hit tune you button. Sorry about that. Uh, well, well, thank you, uh, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair and the, and the, uh, remaining honorable council members. We appreciate the chance to be here. Uh, uh, listening to some of the, uh, other presentations from Fire and Police. I'm gonna, I'm, I'm been blue lining my pages here, so I'm cutting out some, uh, some text, uh, to make this a little bit quicker for you. Um, and I'll jump right into it. I, I don't know how to explain the last year in, uh, in public safety. It's been a little crazy, as it has been for you. Um, I, I can tell you that we have taken advantage of some of the downtime in the last year, uh, here at the, at the courthouse. Um, that reduced pace, we've been able to, uh, increase some training opportunities, uh, continue to, uh, advance our technology improvements and to begin some significant policy review, um, for our general orders here to bring a more modern approach to how we conduct business and to, uh, continue to protect the citizens at large and the, uh, and the folks at the courthouse here. Um, as I start with, uh, with our general fund, with the operating budget, uh, we go from page three oh four to three oh nine uh, in the budget book. And in this year's, uh, general budget, uh, you'll see some minor increases for training and equipment purchases. Um, those increases do not represent recurring costs or some one-time costs that were built in, uh, to the budget for us for this year. Um, the bulk of the funding for the increase in the Sheriff's budget is, uh, is due to employee costs. Um, the cost represents, uh, full year funding, uh, for contractual pay increase from FY twenty-one. Uh, Sheriff's deputies increased in twenty-one started in January, uh, of the year, so they got a mid-year increase. Um, and then this year, we'll also see that the full funding of that increase plus another mid-year increase in January of twenty twenty-two. And that is, uh, the bulk, uh, of our budget increase, uh, for this year. Um, some of the, uh, other things, we did renegotiate a contract this year, um, uh, that, uh, Chief Deputy, uh, Tuohy did with, uh, Axon, our TASER, uh, representative. Um, one of the things that was lacking, uh, here was strategic planning in the past. Uh, there was no plan for replacement of, uh, TASERS. Uh, he was able to get a, um, a, uh, a deal with, uh, Axon so that we could finally get into a proper replacement schedule, uh, for those and that those, uh, we've had some that were failing and out of service, out of warranty, so we weren't able to replace those. Uh, we will be back on schedule in FY twenty-two with that purchase, and, uh, we appreciate the work from the Budget Office in doing that. Um, I'm thankful for the, uh, two new positions that were recommended in the budget for the upcoming fiscal year, but um, these fall well short of, of, of our expectations. Um, we have been asked by the, uh, by the judiciary here to, uh, to properly staff the courtrooms, which means putting someone in each, uh, of the, uh, courtrooms when we have proceedings open. Um, to this point, we have not been able to do that with, uh, staffing levels. Um, just to refresh your, your memory on it, uh, the, the Sheriff's Office has three bureaus, but two main bureaus, it's security operations and field operations. Uh, we have, uh, sixty-eight deputy positions and, uh, eight, uh, supervisory positions. Those positions are split equally between those two bureaus. Uh, we believe those bureaus operate, uh, really at a minimal staffing level all the time. Um, just to give you a brief background, uh, we have twenty security posts that have to be staffed here at the courthouse, uh, on a daily basis. And we have, uh, a potential for twenty courtrooms, including thirteen benches, five juvenile courts, um, the, uh, orphans court and the, uh, pre-trial, uh, cases for domestic violence. Um, we don't usually see that type of volume here. We average about eight to ten, uh, courtrooms uh, operating in each of the morning and afternoon sessions. Uh, but with that, with eight to ten operating and with the need for, uh, to supply twenty posts with, uh, thirty-four deputies, you can see with an average of four people out per day on, um, on leave or on training or on long-term disability, that leaves us with about two deputies each day, uh, for average coverage. When we have higher than average volume here, uh, we wind up pulling K-nine officers, uh, or K-nine handlers from the, their positions here in the courthouse and supervisors, as well as some field operations staff when it really does get busy here. Um, so you can see that we're, we're, our requests for personnel are not, um, are not pie in the sky requests. Uh, they are serious requests to, to, uh, cover courtrooms as we should properly here. Um, we are not even on best practice standards, anywhere near best practice standards, uh, according to, uh, some of the, the, the national standards that we follow. The main one is national standards for state courts. And, um, and we are well off, uh, staffing standards for best practice there. Um, we should have roving, roving deputies in the hallways and we should have, uh, uh, some other things that I, for security reasons, I don't want to mention, uh, but we don't have some of those positions that we would really like to have. Uh, we would also like to increase our, uh, K-nine staffing here, but we haven't been able to do that as well. Um, and I look forward to, uh, to working with you, hopefully to try to, try to help that, uh, that staffing side out a little bit. Um, part of our strategic plan in the office was to get to those acceptable levels. Um, we hope not to, uh, to want to be able to, to have to pull people. Um, some of our staffing is supplemented with, uh, two civilian positions that we have here, retired police officers. And, uh, they fill in on some of the door posts and some of the other staffing. And, uh, we do have a, uh, cadet program here, uh, but we only try to use them when it's filling in for something like, um, taking property at the, uh, at the check station, at the, at the main door entrance. Uh, but we don't want to use them as well in those positions. But, um, uh, I'm, I'm happy to, uh, mention capital budget if you'd like. Um, but I'm happy to take questions on the, uh, on the operating side first.
Thank you, Sheriff. And we would like to do the operating side first, Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair Amanda Fiedler, District Five. If you were going by best practice standards, what number of positions would that be?
If we were doing best practice standards, we would have had to have add, add, added since twenty nineteen, twelve positions to the security operations. Um, there is no best practice standard for our field operations side. That really is run purely by court volume of processing of paperwork. Uh, we anticipate that because of increases in demands for, uh, service, uh, probably eight positions on that side. We added two in FY twenty. And of course, this budget is, is proposing two additional, um, for that as well. Um, however, uh, when we were added two in, um, in FY twenty and these two positions, the one thing that, that has been a hang-up of mine since, uh, taking office is, uh, in the, the separation of duties here, where we're all fully certified law enforcement officers for the state of Maryland, um, with those additional duties of service and civil process. However, whenever we're budgeted, we're never budgeted for, uh, vehicles along with a deputy position. We're, we're forced to have to delineate between a security side deputy and a field operations deputy. And the problem with that is that, uh, it really reduces our ability, uh, in the community. One, to have an additional presence in the community. Two, to supplement, uh, our law enforcement partners in the Police Department. Uh, when it comes to, uh, call response, we're on the same channels as they are. So anytime a deputy would be ride, you know, riding to or from work in a car or, uh, or to another assignment, whether it be secondary employment, overtime, uh, any other details, uh, we, we just don't have that option. When it comes to, um, Sheriff's Office duties, uh, according to the, uh, emergency operations plan here in the county, we have to staff, uh, pop-up shelters and, and things like that. Um, we have limited resources to do that when we're not, when we're not fully equipped. And, uh, and we had a lot of shuffling to do this year when we stood up, uh, the Red Roof Inn site and we, we were supposed to cover that twenty-four hours a day. However, because we, we didn't have enough deputies and availability of vehicles, we couldn't do that, and we had to ask the Police Department to step in and help us.
Thank you, Sheriff, and thank you for your presentation.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair Nathan Volkey, District Three. Sheriff, thanks for being here this morning. Wanted to follow up with you. So I believe you and your department are moving, is that right, out of the courthouse?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, incident to that move, and we'll probably talk about that maybe on the Capitol side. I, I don't know where the appropriate place is, whether that's in your operating or not. But, um, the new building that you're moving to, I've understood that I think the Register, Wills, the Liquor Board, a number of other agencies are going to be out there with you. Uh, to what degree do you anticipate that your office will have to assist with or provide any, uh, security or, or I don't know, law enforcement presence with that? Do you think that that at all acts what you need in terms of your staffing? I just want to understand how that sort of plays into the move and what that looks like for you.
Well, thank you again, Sheriff Fredericks, answering the question. Um, uh, yes, we are moving part of our agency, our field operations. Uh, is going to move to the new building, um, which is off of Best Gate Road, so it's, it's very closely located to our building. Um, that, that need is simply because we've outgrown this area and the, uh, in the building we have now. And, uh, the court does plan to expand, uh, their operations here. They are, what I've been told, on the very edge of, uh, their ma- of their maximum capacity for the thirteen judges and anticipate in the future having that a fourteenth judge, which means they have to add courtrooms, um, and some other facilities here for them, uh, as well as a judge's office. and anticipate in the future having that a fourteenth judge, which means they have to add courtrooms, um, and some other facilities here for them, uh, as well as a judge's office. Excuse me. As far as staffing at the new building, we just simply can't. I mean, I mean, I've explained, you know, already the, uh, the staffing levels that we can't even meet here. And we certainly wouldn't be able to move, uh, security staff over to that building as well. It's my understanding that there is a, an anticipation of getting, uh, armed private security for the, uh, door entrance to the, uh, Register of Wills office. What I've recommended, uh, and I'm okay with is a, a, uh, emergency button that's there if there's a need for, for additional service. But I can't guarantee that there's going to be a deputy in the building. We'll be co-located in the lower level of the building with, uh, with the Police School Resource Unit. And, uh, the likelihood is they may have one or two people in that office as well. But you, we just simply can't guarantee that, uh, that staffing, uh, for them.
Ms. Pickard?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Allison Pickard, District Two. Uh, thank you, Mr. Sheriff Fredericks, for being here today. I know you sent us all an email where you were really requesting, um, seven new positions with vehicles. Can you, um, walk us through what, um, what that total cost is? And also, um, what your current ratio is to deputies, um, with vehicles and without? And how you prioritize those? I mean, are, are deputies assigned to the courthouse, therefore they don't have vehicles? Can you just be a little more detailed with your, both the, the, the financial impact of this request, but also the need? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I appreciate the question, uh, Sheriff Fredericks, again. So we, we asked for seven positions. We know that there are needs on both sides of the House for us, both field operations and security operations. Our, uh, our plan to split those was to put four in security. Uh, we think that that would get us to a level where we don't, at least on a daily basis, we don't have to pull, uh, additional deputies, uh, off of their, of their primary duties like K-nine or supervision. The three we were going to add to field operations were simply to, uh, take up volume that, uh, we, we are really at, operating in our civil, uh, civil deputy, uh, posts, uh, that do all of our summon service, and do summary ejectment papers, a lot of that landlord tenant, uh, type of work. We're really, they're, they're really working at maximum capacity and we need to relieve some of that, uh, with them. We don't have any overlapping deputies in that area, so they have their own post area when they're out on disability, when they're out on sick leave or annual leave. Those posts, uh, have to be picked up by other people. And right now that, um, that becomes untenable when we're, when we're in, uh, uh, certain points of the month when we're getting a lot of, um, ejectment paperwork and things like that. So, uh, we wanted to also be able to increase, uh, warrant service here. We haven't been able to do that for, uh, quite some time and, and it shows in, uh, outstanding warrants. We have been able by reorganizing to, uh, stem the tide of increases in warrants. We have been able to stagnate that number quite a bit and, uh, and we're pleased with that. But we wanted to get, start moving in the other direction now. And, uh, and we can't do that without that additional staffing. When it comes to, uh, the vehicles, that's simply a matter of, um, of us be, having any flexibility at all. Uh, we can't, we have gone to a basically, uh, five-day-a-week full-time operation and our weekend is filled with overtime. But we've done, I think, a great job here of managing overtime so that we're actually under the, uh, overtime budget each year. And, uh, and we've been able to do that while we have, uh, regular weekend overtime every weekend. Um, and that is to serve, uh, immediate orders that come out, uh, from the Commissioner's Office for domestic violence and things like that. But we can't, uh, staff those positions with security deputies who don't have vehicles. And all of our deputies know, that know the jobs, uh, full well that, um, each side of the house does. But we can't have, uh, that additional staffing, the option of even having them work, uh, some additional details that we need to have work, uh, when they don't have vehicles to get out on the road with. So, um, so it really limits our ability to be able to staff, uh, without having vehicles. So that's, you know, that, that kind of gives you a little bit of that background. When it comes to deputies themselves, um, let me grab my page here. It's about, um, including employee costs, uh, benefits. It's about eighty-five thousand dollars per deputy, uh, to, to bring someone on. And then you have the recurring costs, uh, salary and benefits. It's, uh, about seventy-four thousand dollars. That eighty-five thousand includes basic equipment, um, ballistic vests, uh, their gun belt with all the, with all the accessories. To bring on a vehicle as well, it's an additional thirty-eight thousand, uh, five hundred dollars roughly, um, almost thirty-nine thousand dollars. And the recurring cost on that is a lease rate vehicle, uh, recurring cost, um, of, uh, about forty-eight thousand dollars per year. And that's bringing in a vehicle, equipping it and putting, uh, the, that, uh, police package, uh, in the vehicle. So you're looking at, um, you know, cost of about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars per deputy, uh, per year recurring cost.
Thank you, uh, uh, Mr. Fredericks. May I ask another question, a follow-up, Madam Chair? So is it your goal to get to a, uh, one vehicle per deputy in your department? And do, are they take-home vehicles?
Yes, ma'am.
And where are you at right now?
Let me answer that. Yeah. So, so I'll let Colonel Toohey answer that. He handles our plea.
Chief Deputy Frank Toohey, Sheriff's Office. Um, we currently have fifty-three cars under lease rate, but three of those are dedicated prisoner transport vans, which are not assigned to a deputy. So there's fifty, uh, what we call personal patrol vehicles. The Sheriff's Office traditionally had unmarked cars, but we have, under this administration, moved towards marking, uh, a majority, if not all of our cars, um, except for what are determined to be administrative cars. We've been fortunate that with the replacement cycle that we fell in in the last two years, we've been able to hold back from going to auction seven cars. But those seven cars are called direct charge cars, which means that we, um, from our operating budget, bear the cost of paying for any repairs and upkeep on those. And the reason we kept them in service is to provide the deputies that are working this overtime on the weekends to make sure that, uh, warrant, civil service, those type of things are, are accomplished. We've been able to do that at minimal cost, um, and they've had access to those seven cars. We currently have a sworn, uh, entourage of eighty-two and we're at fifty cars right now, um, that are under lease and then seven that we're holding back direct charge that could, um, disappear at any time. If they have a mechanical failure or involved in an accident, they'll just be taken off the books.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your answer. Some thank yous.
Okay, um, Sheriff Fredericks, I believe we can go on to the capital side.
All righty. So, so capital for us is, uh, is pretty simple. There, uh, actually haven't been any capital requests, major capital requests from the Sheriff's Office in over twenty years. Uh, this one is the, um, cell door replacement project. And it was, um, it was pre-approved in the FY twenty-one budget for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. For the capital budget, what you're seeing is, um, an additional, and I, and I apologize, our, um, our capital budget was on page fifty-four. My apologies for that. But what is there is a, there is a seventy-six thousand dollar increase, uh, built into the, the, uh, new part of the, this capital budget. And, uh, that was simply for, um, some, uh, design costs that Ronnie anticipated, uh, earlier on. So it represents a pretty minimal, um, amount and that, uh, that project is due to take place and be completed this year.
Does anyone have any questions? Seeing none, I believe we may be able to dismiss Sheriff Fredericks.
All right. Well, thank you for your time. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for all the work that you do and have a great day.
Absolutely. You too.
Madam Secretary, our next presentation is the Detention Center. And my dog.
They are joining. They should be popping up here at any moment.
From the Detention Center, we will have our new Superintendent Chris Klein, Catherine Robinson, Michael Borjese and Patricia Moore.
Madam Chair, I see that the Detention Center group is here. We're trying to get them to start their video.
Good morning.
Good morning. Sorry about the technical difficulties.
No problem. Uh, before you start, um, I've, I've read everyone's names who are in your room, but if you would all please introduce yourselves and then since you're in the same room, um, it's important for our auto transcript system, um, to please state your name so that we know who's speaking.
I'll start out. Christopher Klein, Superintendent, Department of Detention.
Patricia Moore, Director of Business for the Detention.
Catherine Robinson, Correctional Facility Administrator, Orange Road.
Mike Borjese, Facility Administrator for Jennifer Road. Good morning.
Good morning. Uh, please go ahead and roll into your operating presentation.
So this is Hannah Dyer from the Budget Office. I think I'm going to do just a, a brief, um, overview of the department's budget book pages quickly before they go into their presentation, if that's all right with everyone. So the Department of Detention Facilities pages start on page two seventy-eight of the proposed budget book. And I'm just going to briefly speak to the comparative statement of expenditures on page two seventy-nine. As you can see in this chart, the fiscal twenty-two proposed budget for the department totals fifty-six point nine million. And about fifty-five million of this is general funds and there's an additional one point five million in inmate benefit funds and, and a small amount of grant funds. The net change for the proposed budget is, um, an increase of one point one million. Uh, this is made up of an increase of one point five million in general funds, partially offset by decreases in other funds. And the increase, as you can see at the bottom of the page in the object detail, is almost entirely driven by personnel costs in the personal services line. Um, and this is for the pay package increases as well as three reclassifications that are in the proposed budget. Um, and with that, I'll turn it back over to the department.
Thank you. Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of County Council. Again, I'm Christopher Klein, Superintendent of the Department of Detention Facilities. I'm honored to prepare, appear before you today to present our FY twenty-two operating and capital budget for the Department of Detention. Before getting into our, uh, presentation, I'd like to mention that May second through May eighth is recognized as National Correctional Officers Week, as declared by late President Reagan in nineteen eighty-four. As then-President Reagan stated, "The important work of correctional officers often does not receive the recognition from the public it deserves." With that sentiment in mind, I'd like to publicly recognize all of the staff of the Department of Detention Facilities for their hard work and dedication to this difficult profession. On behalf of all staff of the Department of Detention Facilities, I'd like to thank County Council members and the County Executive and his office for the continued support of our department as we strive to fulfill our mission. Next slide, please. All right. As we, um, fulfill to support our mission to provide public safety through confinement of pre-trial detainees and convicted offenders in safe and secure facilities and by offering alternatives to incarceration and re-entry services which are comprehensive and effective. In preparation of this year's budget, we were reminded of the limitations that have confronted our county and the fiscal challenges we have faced due to the unprecedented worldwide pandemic. We focused on creating and submitting a budget based upon conservative growth and one that is sustainable into the future. With that in mind, our budget request focused on the areas of maintaining safe operations and secure facilities and providing essential offender programs and services. As our department continues to manage the COVID-nineteen pandemic response for offenders and staff, we continue to conduct daily temperature checks, practice social distancing, effectively utilize PPE and scheduled routine cleaning. Other responses, responses have included utilizing available bed space to allow for quarantining of new offenders and sus- suspected exposure cases, suspending programs and services, providing virtual circuit court hearings and providing vaccination and testing. In response, we continue to seek the assistance and guidance from our partners at the Department of Health as well as adhering to CDC guidelines. Next slide. Amid the ongoing pandemic with the support of the county, our department was successful in opening the Central Holding and Processing Center in June of two thousand twenty. Today, we have processed over five thousand intakes, averaging just over six hundred and sixty intakes per month. In aligning with the workload, our FY twenty-two request calls for the reclassification of positions to continue to support the functions of this specialized unit within our department. In addition, we have continued to maximize various alternatives to incarceration and have increased the number of those on house arrest from a hundred to a hundred and twenty. And we continue to see an increase of those we supervise on pre-trial release with a current caseload over eight hundred. Other various initiatives involve converting to a new uniform and upgrading weapon systems for handguns and shotguns. Next slide. Our budget request for Jennifer Road Detention Center is for twenty-nine point eight million. JRDC handles intake, pre-trial detention, maximum security and various special housing units for medical, juvenile and behavioral observation. Our average daily population is currently three hundred and eighteen. There are two hundred and forty-nine positions and two contractual staff assigned to the facility. Next slide. And, and you can move to the next slide. This is our, uh, Central Holding and Processing Center. The budget request is for three point five nine million. As previously stated, CHPC is the newest addition and offers efficient booking and processing of arrestsees while effectively coordinating with our Records Department as well as Commissioner Services. There are forty-two of p- positions assigned to CHPC. Next slide. Our budget request for the Ordinance Road Correctional Center is for eighteen point four million. ORCC handles both sentenced and pre-trial men and women, women, and provides a robust array of educational, re-entry and substance abuse programs, as well as numerous other services. ORCC also hosts our training unit, which I'm happy to report is currently hosting our first class for two thousand twenty-one with, with the slated graduation time of June fifteenth. Our current average daily population is a hundred and fifty-three and there is currently a hundred and twenty-three positions assigned to the facility. Next slide. Our budget request for administration is for three point five million. Administration is comprised of eighteen positions covering human resources, financial services, and the oversight of our medical, mental health and food service contracts, which account for roughly seven point five million of our annual budget. Next slide. This is our capital request. For FY twenty-two, we have two capital budget requests. Our first request is for four hundred and twenty-five thousand for ORCC to provide secure covers for two of the recreation yard areas. This will make these areas consistent with the other recreational areas throughout the facility and be a much-needed addition to maintaining safe and secure facilities. The other item in our capital request is for two hundred and fifty thousand to complete the lobby renovation at JRDC as well as fund other prioritized facility improvements. In closing, our hard-working, dedicated staff have a difficult job protecting our community. The detention facilities are small cities entrusted by the public to provide humane treatment of individuals in a secure environment. The budget, this budget will allow us to continue to improve safety, morale and the effectiveness of the overall correctional system. We remain committed to working together, providing for public safety and are prepared to ha- answer any questions that you may have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Do any of my colleagues have questions? Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. Uh, good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here with us. I had a couple of questions, but I'll start with this one. Resolution nineteen dash twenty, which this council passed and the voters approved and put into the charter for a probationary period for public safety, uh, included detention officers having that probationary period. Have you seen any negative impacts from that, um, charter amendment being passed in terms of your ability to recruit and retain, um, qualified detention officers?
Um, none that I'm aware of at this time, sir.
Okay, thank you. Madam Chair, I'll wait for the next round.
Thank you. Ms. Rodby.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lisa Rodby in District Six. Um, nice to meet you. I think this is the first time we've actually been face-to-face. Um, well, if you call this face-to-face. Um, anyway, um, I was just curious. I saw you had some information about, um, COVID in the detention centers, and I was curious about vaccines, um, especially for, um, detainees that are there on a longer-term basis. Have they been available? Is there plans to make them available? Has staff been, I mean, I, I would assume at this point, all staff that would like to be vaccinated has been vaccinated. So I'm just curious, anything you can tell me about that?
Yeah, absolutely. Excellent question. Um, so we, we have, um, initially, we started with a vaccine. Um, we had trouble with the first run. I think there was some hesitation on behalf of the population. Uh, so I think the numbers were roughly seventeen percent, um, of the offender population. Staff, um, was a little bit higher, I think, at fifty-fifth, uh, fifty-five percent. But, um, the staff obviously had the opportunity, as time moved on, to access other resources to get vaccinated, whether through their healthcare provider or through some of the sites, the local, um, initiatives that, that were run through the county. Um, we've recently reached out to the Department of Detention, or excuse me, the Department of Health, um, and partnered with them for a regular cycle of vaccines to be brought in once a month. Um, so we're happy, um, we're happy for that initiative. Um, I think the emails were just yesterday as far as coordinating schedules, but the plan is to bring the vaccine into the offender population to those that want it. Uh, we'll schedule with them and coordinate with them how many, um, per month. We, we average roughly two, is it two hundred intakes? Two hundred intakes a month? Um, so obviously, some of those, um, individuals might have received the vaccine outside, but we're definitely for, uh, moving forward, gonna have it offered once a month at both of our facilities.
Okay, Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. Uh, thank you all for the presentation and for being here today. In the County Executive's remarks in his budget presentation, he mentioned the, this concept of studying, combining the detention facilities. Um, and, and I'm trying to figure out, I, I've had a few questions from constituents on that specific line in the budget address, and I'm trying to figure out if there is money for a study in here, or whether it's in the capital side. And if so, if you could point me to where it is and how much it is, and then kind of any thoughts you have on, on the reason for that study?
Oh, thank you. Uh, so the money, I believe, is in the admin side of the budget. I think it's roughly eighty thousand dollars. It's two hundred thousand? Okay, I apologize. It's two hundred thousand for the study. Um, as far as the, um, the need for the study, obviously, um, the County Executive is looking at the, um, you know, decrease in the population, um, although right now, we don't know if we're looking at true numbers with COVID. Um, so we know we've been taking a lot of measures to divert as many people as we can to, to, obviously, the numbers we presented, whether it's house arrest or pre-trial supervision, um, to, to not be overflowed, so we have the flexibility to move our population to manage, um, you know, any potential outbreaks that we would have inside the facilities. Uh, but, but we've had great conversations since I've been here about, um, the opportunity to maybe utilize some of our space to provide some programming to help continue to divert, uh, people away from incarceration. So whether that's through providing, um, re-entry services or providing um, other, other options that might be, um, you know, potential therapeutic community, um, some type of program that can, can, um, help break the cycle of incarceration. I think that's where we, we might wanna look at, um, focusing this study on. I had a great meeting with, uh, the, uh, Anarona County Police Department yesterday with Derek Matthews and just talking about some ideas. They have a re-entry program there, um, that they're working with on the police side, and, and we, we look to possibly partner with that and see if we can provide maybe some one-stop-shop services at our facility um, that, you know, maybe looks like an inside-out program that we can funnel people inside to the program, but also be a, a stopping point for people on the outside that need to access services in one location. So, um, it, I understand it was in the request, um, but we're definitely having discussions on, on what the study will look like moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bulkey?
That was actually the same question I had, so thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions? It appears we're a very quiet bunch once again. Okay, well, Mr. Superintendent and everyone there in the room, thank you for taking the time to, uh, be with us this morning, and we appreciate your work and what you do. Um, and if anybody has follow-up questions, they may reach out to you directly, or Madam Auditor will be in touch. So, uh, thank you again for your time today.
Thank you very much. Nice to meet y'all.
Nice to meet you. Madam Secretary, I believe that brings us to our final presentation today. Recreation and Parks. We save the most fun for last.
Good morning. Jessica Lee is Director of Recreation and Parks. I have with me today Erica Matthews, who's our Chief of Planning and Construction, um, as well as behind the scenes, Lisa D, our Business Manager, Kimmy Anderson, our Chief of Childcare Services, and Barbara Palito, who is our Agricultural Program Administrator. Um, we're gonna start off with the FY twenty-two operating budget that's on page two hundred and thirty-two of your operating book. Um, first off, I just wanna thank this council for all your support in the last year. These last twelve months have definitely been unprecedented, and we at the department really appreciate all the communications, the problem-solving, and the support that each one of you guys have given us through the pandemic. Uh, we couldn't have done this without the teamwork of everybody on this call. Uh, I also wanna just publicly acknowledge all the hard-working employees at Wreckin' Park. It's their outstanding service to the public that really make us an awesome department. So a lot of times I get the pats on the back and the praise, but, you know, it's our people. It's the employees of Wreckin' Park that really deserve that pat on the back. Um, with that said, I'm gonna go over a couple of operating highlights. We're gonna dive pretty deep into the capital budget, so I'm just gonna keep our first, uh, part of the presentation on the operating. One of our major accomplishments on the operating side is that we obtained our accreditation from the Commission for Accreditation and Parks and Recreation, which is known as the CAPRA accreditation. This means that our department had national standards that we met in order, uh, measuring our operations, our management, and our services to the community. It's a pretty prestigious accreditation. There's, we're only one of a hundred and eighty-six agencies nationwide to get this accreditation. It took the department three to five years to pull together everything that we needed to do to apply and receive this remarkable uh, accomplishment, and over the next couple of years, we'll continue to work with our national, uh, partners to, uh, to keep that accreditation and to keep providing excellent services. Uh, another major accomplishment of the previous year is just us dealing with COVID. So we have had an all-hands-on-deck philosophy here at Wreckin' Park, and many of you have seen our employees all over the place. We took our recreation employees when we shut down programs, and we put them out in the parks because parks were open and they were experiencing record-high visitation, that we were able to create rec groups that could go out and do beautification projects, maintain the park property, um, and help the park staff that was feeling an extreme amount of stress during the pandemic. We also, uh, put employees out at the food bank and working warehouse, had our food pods in the park, um, so that we could serve the public in a way that maybe we had never served the public before. Uh, our childcare had a lot of, uh, employees that worked the senior warm line and, and the three-one-one line so that we could help answer from cause and match people with the services that the county had to provide. So during the pandemic, we, we really had everybody working. Everybody wasn't just getting a paycheck. Everybody was doing something, um, to help out with the new essential services of the county. Uh, another huge accomplishment in the past year was just operating essential childcare. So during the pandemic, childcare went to the state, only allowing certain childcare facilities to provide services, opening up the gates a little bit, but yet we still didn't have access to our schools, so we partnered with the Department of Aging. We put childcare in senior centers. We're now working on getting the childcare back into the schools. Uh, we've also done hybrid childcare, full-day childcare, things that our childcare division never had to do before, but also we turned it around e- amazingly quickly. We had to have lots of different alternatives, and we had to be ready to hit the ground running as soon as, uh, childcare was opened up to the public. So even though we maybe only served about ten percent of the population that we typically serve in our childcare services, that ten percent was essential. They were hospital employees and county employees and the people that needed to get to work during the height of the pandemic. Uh, we're working on a lot of great things in the FY twenty-two budget. I'm gonna highlight some of the changes, but one of the most important things we're doing right now is updating our Land Preservation, Parks and Recreation Plan, known as the LPPIP. I know each one of you have been given the survey, and we've asked for support of our county resident to complete the survey. As of today, we've got about twenty-six hundred responses on that online survey. Uh, we also rolled out a middle school survey, which in the first week had four hundred middle schoolers respond. So we're getting the input from everybody this year. We are getting the word out on the street. Data is power. Once we know what the people of Anarona County want, we can better serve that community and better serve your constituents. So the LPPR survey is a huge, uh, priority for our department moving forward in FY twenty-two. To dive into some of the details, I'm gonna take you right to page two hundred and thirty-five, which is the Director's Bureau page. I'm only gonna highlight those things that are different or changing going forward. Um, so on this page, you see some increases in personal services. Uh, that is primarily due to the pay package that you've heard all the other departments talk about, but also a new position, a GIS specialist position. Uh, this is a full-time position that will be responsible for building and managing our data. Right now, it's a very bulky, labor-intensive process, and those of you that have requested data from the department know how long it takes us to respond and how inconsistent sometimes our responses are. So this position is responsible for the data that we use to create maps, that we use for resource management, we use to plan forward, we do our modeling off of, and our reporting. So some examples are things like when we create a water access map that shows the twenty-two car launch sites, uh, or car top launch sites in the county. That's built off of a spreadsheet. That spreadsheet then gets uploaded into the GIS to create the data points to print the map. Same with the feeder system map, where we, we provided each one of the council members with all the fields and all the amenities within your district. That's a manual process in which we have staff on the rec side filling out certain fields, staff on the park side filling out fields, and then ultimately, an individual pulling it all together and putting it on the map. Another, uh, great benefit of having this position is creating, uh, layers within our GeoCortex. So this week, the council deliberated over the Sands Road property, and one of the questions that were raised in Sands Road was the POS implications. If we had a POS layer in the GIS mapping, you could simply layer that POS on top of all of our parks, and you would see that the Sands Road property in question has no POS-related funding to it. It wasn't acquired with POS, it wasn't developed with POS. So the power in the data will get you answers and will allow us at the department to have more consistent management of the data on a regular basis so that we can respond quickly and that we can respond consistently. Every year, when you ask for a map, it shouldn't look different. It should always look the same because the data is built and maintained by the same person that has a history or knowledge of the department as well as being an OIT specialist. The other major change in, in operations for the Director's Office is that we're asking for an increase in our maintenance grants to community groups. So we have a hundred and fifty regional and community parks. In order to maintain and keep those parks up to standard, we need help from the community. Those community groups are essentially athletic organizations that use our parks, specifically fields, on a regular basis. We give them a maintenance grants that cover things like trash pickup, porta-potties, um, the mowing of the fields, and, and that money is never enough for our community associations, but it also hasn't been updated in many, many years. So this request this year will take a eight hundred dollar per unit, up to a thousand dollars per unit, which is a small step to giving our athletic organizations and community partners a little bit more money to help us maintain the parks. It's a win-win for the county. The communities feel a sense of ownership and pride in their community parks, and we, as a county, don't have to hire up more maintenance and staff in order to maintain those parks. Um, that's pretty much all the changes in the Director's Office. The next page is the Recreation Division on page two thirty-six. Uh, the only increase you really see in funding in this division is, is, uh, pursuant to the pay package. However, we may not have asked for additional money. We are doing things a little bit different in FY twenty-two. So I definitely think that coming out of COVID, we've had some lessons learned, and an example there is how we provide our programming. Uh, during COVID, we moved a lot of things onto a virtual world, and we offered virtual classes and virtual, uh, programs. Whereas coming out of COVID, we didn't wanna just jump right into in-person, uh, programming. We wanted to offer the, the decision or the choice to the residents and what they're comfortable with. So an example is in our dance program. Dancing, dance program went viral during the pandemic. Uh, people signed up for dance program that never signed up for dance before. They loved having the online dance teacher where they could put their toddler or their school-aged child in front of the computer, and they could learn how to dance. So that program is gonna continue. Even though post-pandemic, we can have our dance classes in our aquatic centers and in our rec centers, we're also gonna offer the virtual program. So we didn't ask for additional funding, but we are seeing things through a different lens, and we're trying to meet the needs of our residents in every way that we can. Our goal or mission is to serve all of our county residents, no matter what their comfort level is with being in-person or being virtual. So with the same level of funding, we're hoping to be able to do more and do a little bit different. The next page, two thirty-seven, is your Parks Bureau. Uh, this is where you see all the funding for our regional parks and our community parks, as well as our trails. Uh, there's the additional funding in here. Again, is a pay package, takes up a big piece of the personal services, but we do have a couple of new positions in here. We have a full-time park ranger position that will be stationed out in Lake Waterford, which is one of our busiest, uh, regional parks in North County. In two thousand and twenty, they had seven hundred and fifty thousand, uh, visitations, which is a huge increase over two thousand and nineteen of only four hundred thousand. Uh, with that said, we have a lake at Lake Waterford. We've got a adaptive playground that is extremely popular. Um, and we also have the Freedom Fields, which offer our adaptive sports program. The staff is simply a park superintendent and a park ranger. That's all we have out there. It's open seven days a week from sunset to sun, or sunrise to sunset, and we just need more coverage. We need more support to that, uh, that regional park. So this additional park ranger will allow us to have somebody on duty when the park is open to make sure that it is safe and that it is consistent with our other regional parks. Uh, in addition, we have two part-time park rangers in this bureau, uh, that are specifically assigned to our natural trails. And this is things like Bacon Ridge, um, where we don't have any assigned park rangers to. We rotate rangers through those, those natural trail parks, but we haven't had a specific assignment there. And again, during COVID and even pre-COVID, places like Bacon Ridge, we're getting a lot of attention and have a lot of visitations. So being open ten hours a day, every day of the week, we need to make sure that we have some peak hour coverage. We'll have rangers out there on bikes that can ride through the park to make sure that the patrons of the park are adhering to, uh, the restrictions and regulations, and it's a safe environment and that we're able, uh, to provide support to those out at Bacon Ridge. Uh, moving on to the golf course bureau into, on page two hundred and thirty-eight. Uh, one more thing about the parks that I wanted to note that you don't see in the numbers. It's just a really big effort to modernize, and I know I spoke about this a little bit last year. Uh, we've been working hand-in-hand with OIT on all of our day-to-day operations to bring us up to speed with technology. And out in the parks, that's crucial. Things like being able to take credit cards in our, uh, uh, gatekeeper stations, things like security cameras and making sure that we have adequate counters coming in and out of the park. Um, and we're also rolling out a park reservation system that is something that is, as a result of overcrowdedness at one particular park, Mayo Beach Park, um, where people are lay, are standing in really, really long lines through a community to get into a park that usually meets capacity within the first hour of opening. We'll use technology to help people make a reservation so that they know that they have a parking spot when they get to the park so that they can come for the day. Um, again, no charges to Mayo Beach Pike right now. Is it's a, um, free park. The reservation system is a use of technology where I could go online, make my reservation. I could do it through an app. I could call the two-two-two number to make my reservation. But now I don't have to wait in a long line just to get to the front to be told, sorry, the park is- But now I don't have to wait in a long line just to get to the front to be told, sorry, the park is closed, have to do a three-point turn and drive back through the community. It also benefits the rest of our regional parks because that same system that's heavily used by the state parks can be used to make your credit card payment. So now I wanna go to a park like Jug Bay, but I don't have six dollars in my pocket to pay the entrance fee. I can use the credit card um payment through your part, your pass-now system to pay for my reservation and just show the QR code to the gatekeeper or to the visitor center to just say that I've paid uh my fees online. So it, it helps the department by using technology rather than building, you know, more gate houses and hiring more staff to be able to afford the public access to our parks, not just by driving up to the gatekeeper and giving them cash, but by making reservation online by paying online. Um so that's just some examples of what we're doing with modernization in the parks. Uh even though you don't see a budget line item that's increased, it is a change in the way that we're doing business. Uh next page for the golf courses, uh two thirty-eight. Uh you see a large increase in golf courses followed by a very large decrease in golf courses. So I wanna explain it a little bit. We finally have two fully functional golf courses. We were able to open the Preserve Eisenhower over the weekend. Huge, huge success. Big shout out to the Capital Division and uh the golf course staff uh to getting that online. It is a beautiful, beautiful course. Even as a non-goffer, it is just one of the premier locations or parks for Anandar County, a highlight. But it costs money to run a golf course. So we do need to make sure that our golf course consultants have enough appropriation in order to do the day-to-day business. Things like hiring the groundskeepers, making sure that the part-time staff is paid minimal wage, making sure that the maintenance staff keeps those greens green and that we don't have to do another capital budget to repair or fix the new course in the future. Um that does get offset heavily by revenues because people love our golf courses. They come out and play by the thousand. So we will, or we are anticipating that we will bring in more revenues than that operating cost and that our golf courses will be profitable in FY twenty-two. They will be operational the full year and they will be profitable. Um what you see is the decrease is just moving the debt service out of the Golf Course Bureau and the General Fund over to finance non-departmental, where all the rest of the debt service for the county belongs. So it's a consistency accounting-type adjustment to make sure that all of our debt service is in one place. It was an outlier to have the debt service here in the General Fund. So you see both the increase and the decrease moving forward in FY twenty-two. The next page, two hundred and thirty-nine, is a special revenue fund. This is a self-sustaining fund for childcare in which the fees that are paid for by the families pay for all the services uh that we provide. It has seen a huge hit during COVID as we were still providing services, but we were serving a whole lot less individuals. So we're recognizing some additional revenues in the childcare fund associated with the federal funding for recovery. Uh but we're also taking over ten new sites. And these are the open-door sites that partnered with the Board of Education for years um have sadly gone out of operations. Heavily because of COVID, they could not keep their payroll and provide the services for the fees that they were collecting. So the Board of Education and the county already having a partnership on the other forty sites um have decided that the most seamless transition of these sites is to let rec and park come in and do what we do best. And that's to provide services um in the schools at an affordable price. So what you see in the largest increase of childcare is taking over those ten sites. Um you also have an increase in personal services that is part of the conversion of our childcare directors from temp seasonal to full-time staff. So as many of you remember, when we did the fifteen-hundred-hour limitation restriction bill, we spoke heavily about some of the abuses that were happening in the county classified service. Were there full-time, were there employees that we were expecting to work full-time, but we were not treating them with long longevity pension and benefits? And one of the groups of employees that we recognized being inadequately served by the fifteen-hundred-hour rule limitation being lifted were the childcare directors. They manage childcares that have over seventy-five participants. They are asked to perform at a very high level. They are trained and they typically have long longevity. We want them to stay with the county for the long term because that benefits our program, so my consistency in a leadership. So we're doing what we promised we would do and we are looking at this, this group of employees and making them full-time employees rather than just increasing their hours to full-time hours. So those are the two major uh changes in our funding for FY twenty-two in childcare. So that's all of my uh operating budget for FY twenty-two. We appreciate your consideration in the operating budget. I'm happy to answer any questions you have on the operating side before we move over to the capital side, which is a little bit more voluminous and detail-oriented um at this time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lays. Um who of my colleagues have questions? Ms. Robean.
Uh thank you, Madam Chair, Lisa Robean, District Six. So um I'm just wanna say a shout-out thanks to, um thank you for bringing those childcare director positions um into the full-time merit position. I just, I'm so, I, that's, that's the direction we really should be moving, so I'm so pleased to hear that. Um so that was item number one. Item number two is a very quick question. Do you know what the greens fees are at the new Eisenhower Golf Course? I'm sorry, that's.
So I do. It's, it's a, it's a little two-tiered. So we have weekday fee that um I think are forty-seven dollars for in-county and then we have out-of-county fees. So what I can do is I can send the council the link to Eisenhower that has all the fee structure. It's not just a one fee for greens. You pay one price during weekdays, you pay another price during weekends or peak days. And then we also have an in-county and a out-of-county uh layer of fees. Right now, we have an appreciation fee uh uh discount for in-county residents to play during the week as a way to get people to come out to the greens and play it especially as it's opening up. But I can certainly send you the link uh that show you all the, the fee structure.
Thank you. And just one last question, Madam Chair, if I may. Thank you. Um what's, where are we at with um the Quiet Waters Retreat? I'm getting questions from constituents, hoping that there's something coming for us soon. And I know that the fire there was probably a setback and I feel like you mentioned that at some, maybe during um GDP. But I'm just curious what, um what you can tell us.
Absolutely. I would suggest that we wait till we get over to the capital side 'cause one of our new projects is the Quiet Waters Project and that includes components of studying the retreat and giving you an update of where we are uh with the planning. But recently, we did just demolish the buildings that were destroyed by both the tornado going through there and the fire. So the staff is working pretty heavily in getting the grading and securing the grounds so that it's a safe environment um right now. So that was one of the biggest concerns. But Erica will go over the project and tell you where we're headed with that project, with that property as well.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Nathan Volkey, District Three. Ms. Lays, good morning. Um thank you for giving those statistics on Lake Waterford and the increase in uh visitor traffic there. I am curious with respect to Lake Waterford. Is there somewhere in the capital program where we are looking at the dredging for Lake Waterford and that possible project? I, I'm, I'm pretty sure you've heard of that project already, but I think it might be in the works. I'm just not sure where it is in the capital program.
Absolutely. Uh so Erica is gonna go through the Lake Waterford. There is a dredging uh project going on and we're also working uh with our partners over in DPW for a stream restoration project in the future at Lake Waterford as well. So the details will be in our capital review when we get to that project.
Thank you very much. Uh I have another question, but I'll wait.
Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Allison Picker, D-two. I just wanted to take a minute to thank the, the Rec and Parks staff and Ms. Lays uh for their hard work. Um I know that I'm a very vocal advocate uh in the Rec and Parks uh division, but I am really encouraged um with everything going on in the operating side and the changes in the modernization that's happening. I know um that the staff is really working hard and has really taken some of my concerns to heart and are, are, are moving forward. So I'm excited and I will reserve any capital projects for that time. So I just wanted to make sure I, I got my thank you out before I forgot. So thank you all for your hard work.
Thank you. Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Nathan Volkey, District Three again. So Ms. Lays, one of the things I did wanna ask you about was um on page two thirty-nine, the increase of the fifteen childcare center directors. So when we had done the fifteen-hundred-hour charter uh amendment, I don't recall this being something in the discussion and I have I don't know, I was surprised to see this in here. Not, I'm not saying one way or the other, good, bad, sideways. It's just, it was not something that I was aware was part of the discussion of. If we changed the fifteen-hundred hours, that that was somehow gonna open us up to fifteen new positions in the operating budget. So did I miss that in that discussion or is this something that has changed since then? Any, any insight you can have?
So, so the discussion we had during the fifteen-hundred hour was the concern from um some individuals about the abuse of raising the fifteen-hundred-hour limitation that rather than having full-time classified positions that we would just undermine that process and have everybody just be full-time contractual people, thus avoiding giving them benefits. And some of the conversation that we had, both on the record and uh behind the scenes, was certain classifications, uh typically female-driven classifications county-wide that should really be full-time classified positions. But because we were able to hire them as temp seasonals and now we were raising the ceiling, saying you could work full-time, they would never become full-time positions and that those uh professions would always lack in longevity and benefits uh because of the nature of how they were born. So the childcare directors came up specifically as a classification that works full-time hours, even though they're, they were capped at fifteen-hundred hours, they work a lot of hours and that they were cut off by being the director for both school programs and summer programs because they would reach that ceiling and that our expectation of the directors is that they are trained and that they have the experience and the longevity to run our programs as a full-time employee should and that they really should be part of the classified service, that they do not warrant a temporary nature. We don't hire them frequently. In fact, we invest a lot of money in their leadership training and their certification to run a, a center that they should be full-time employees. And so uh in the testimony that I gave on the fifteen-hundred-hour um support, I said that it didn't fix everything. And this is an example of what it didn't fix. That raising the ceiling on the hour limitation didn't fix that there were still people working for the county that really should be part of the classified service, but through lack of finances and priorities had never been fully made classified or fully made full-time employees because there was just never enough money. There was never enough priority to do it. Um so my promise to the council was that I would bring forth the employees that I felt like it wasn't fixing and try to do the right thing for them. So this is the uh fifteen directors that even though I, they can work full-time next year, the bar has been lifted, it's not the right way to handle this group or this classification because they truly are treated internally as classified employees. The expectation of them is that they will have longevity and we invest a lot of um leadership and training and certifications into these positions so that they can be the backbone of our childcare system.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Nathan Volkey, District Three. Thanks for that explanation, Ms. Lays. So in terms of the actual budget impact to take these fifteen positions and move them from fifteen-hundred-hour contractual positions into um fifteen full-time positions in the county operating budget with the associated benefit costs, what is the difference there? What, what's the, the delta between those two points?
So, so you're absolutely right. We have the offsetting savings that they were already in the budget as part-time employees. And a handful of them were not only in the budget as part-time employees, but they were also offered healthcare a few years back in order to keep them with the county. So the fiscal impact is less than five hundred thousand dollars for all fifteen physicians to become full-time employees because of that offset of the part-time um piece that was already budgeted. Um in addition, we will be saving a little bit from the hiring of that, those individuals through the process. And when we bring them on, we've assumed that once they get the offering of healthcare, that they're gonna take the healthcare at a different rate than what maybe they already have as well as the pension calculation. So once they become full-time employees and we have a full year of their expenses, we're expecting it to be a less than five hundred thousand dollar fiscal impact to the overall department.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Nathan Volkey, District Three. Thanks again, Ms. Lays. So uh just doing that math, and you probably already have done this before me. Uh so that's about thirty-three thousand per position in additional cost to move them from a contractual position to an actual budgeted position in the FTE schedule with the associated benefits. Is that, am I getting that in the right ballpark?
You're absolutely roughly right and as mainly pension and, and healthcare benefits. So we're not paying the employees more money per se. They are going to have an annualized salary, but the cost in converting them is in the benefits.
Um I'd like to take a chance to offer a comment. Um Sarah Lacy, District One. I, before the pandemic, I had the uh great fortune of having each of my children in childcare and then in-home childcare. Um and of course, my kids are spread out over eleven years. So we had something like fourteen years in the same daycare with the same lady. Um and my children benefit great, greatly from that. But when the pandemic hit, my youngest was still in that daycare and the state ordered it to close. Everyone had to close. And we, um my daycare provider actually decided to take that opportunity to retire. And I know she's not the only one um who did that. Um but I think we all, we've all heard of, you know, the shortage we already had in childcare providers that grew much worse um during, during the pandemic. We also should have heard uh that, you know, this um forced closure and decrease in childcare disproportionately affected women and mothers who either, you know, run these home-based childcare businesses and now had no stability or the ability to continue running them. They couldn't pay their bills, so they had to go do something else. And you have mothers who no longer could get childcare for their children, so they had to leave their jobs. You have um, you know, just all kinds of ways that if we suddenly saw that the, uh any impact to our childcare system is an impact to our safety and, and to our, our social fabric and being able to do the things that we expect to be able to do, having our careers, supporting our families, knowing our children are in a safe and enriching environment every day, you know, before going to school or aftercare. We've also, in my family, been heavy users of aftercare at the elementary schools. And um so the addition, the additional um benefits for childcare providers and the passage of the, you know, lifting that fifteen-hundred-hour limit, um I think are two of some of the best things that we can do as a um county council and as a county. Um because supporting childcare is, goes right to our core mission, um providing equity. Um we're trying to ensure we have an equitable environment for children growing up all throughout this county, no matter where they are in their zip code and no matter how much money their parents make. Um and this is part of our, our capital investment, you know, in our, in our human capital. That's what our children are in budgetary terms. Um and given that most childcare providers are also still women, um it, there's an equity issue there. And I think we need to do everything we can to remedy that, that situation. So I appreciate this very much in the budget and I hope that going forward, Rec and Parks will consider expanding childcare services. Maybe you could become the Department of Recreation, Parks and Childcare um because you're already doing what you're doing very well and it's not a competition with um other forms of, of childcare that people will choose. I don't, I don't think those, those comparisons, you know, um would hold, would hold water. What you provide is a, is a very different product, but serves a greater diversity of people across the county. Um and those, those needs must be met somehow. So I'm glad we can do that and I'm happy to support your budget request.
Thank you.
Those are my remarks. Does anybody else have anything on operating before we go to capital? Seeing none, Ms. Lays, take it away.
All right. So now we're gonna switch over to the capital side and I just wanna start with that we have over fifty projects. So we are really trying to stick to the, only tell you it's new or different. But I, I have to say that our out-year budgets are always gonna change and, and that's something that the council needs to understand. Our out-year budgets are always gonna change and, and that's something that the council needs to understand with the. We're not inflating our costs, but when we go from feasibility and concept, we wanna build something and this is how much we think it's going to cost. To design costs and the actual construction costs, you're gonna see fluctuations in our out-years and, and I think that. Unlike other capital budgets, because we try to do the right thing and we put the placeholders out in the out-years, we then come back and make those. Placeholders more accurate, so almost every one of our projects has a change and it's not because we're doing anything different per se, but it's because the. Concepts or the pieces of the project are coming together and now we have a better number or we've been able to quantify. The cost of the project, so with that stated, we've got um. A budget request of forty-seven point four million dollars in FY twenty-two and that's in comparison to the thirty-five point one million dollars. That was in the program for FY twenty-one, um thirty-three percent of that forty-seven million dollars though is. Outside grant money that we're recognizing in twenty-two, so it might be a, a grant from the state or a grant from a. Organization to help us plan and design or build the facility that we're building, um the department. Uh manages these fifty projects with a very dedicated but very small capital budget staff, so. Uh Erica here, our, our chief uh planning and construction. Has only three project managers to help juggle all fifty of these projects and one of those projects is our largest. Park Reno has hundreds of purchase orders that go against it on an annual basis, so it's a pretty big ask, it's a pretty big workload. Um and I must say that over COVID, we didn't slow down a bit, if anything, we sped up a little bit and tried to get. As much done as we possibly can get done because the public was out there, the public was out there watching. Every one of our projects, asking us about progress, constantly mailing the capital division for updates and statuses, so we have done a really good job. Of keeping things moving forward at the best speed that we can, so with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Erica. She's gonna run through the projects, give you a little bit of a where it's at and update on what we're asking for and then at the very. Tail end of the, the um presentation, you'll see our five brand-new projects and those are in priority order. Quiet Waters Park we have, which Lisa will answer the questions about the retreat. Uh Jug Bay's Environmental Center, which has a very large grant um. Supporting it, the Odington Library Park of which we have been talking about for the last two fiscal years that are finally. Um come into the capital projects and, and has a plan for being constructed. A new ADA compliance project in which we're going to explain to you our approach to becoming more ADA compliant countywide. In Wreckin Parks and then lastly, our Mayo Beach Repairs Project, which replaces the Mayo Beach Improvement Project. For a couple of reasons, one, to clarify the message that we're not building anything new, all we're doing is an extensive maintenance, so we've renamed the project. We've given it its own project and a much better description so that there's no confusion about what we're doing with that, so. Unfortunately, those five are at the very end, so you have to pay attention to everything else until we get to the five new ones, but I'll make sure to keep you awake through the process. So with that said, Erica's gonna start off with the projects that are in the C class and we only have two of them and they start on page three. With Agricultural Preservation Program. We can't hear you, Erica.
Madam Chair, if I may, I have, could, could we clarify the page numbers? I, I think you said page three, is that?
So it's on page three of your capital budget book, so the, the.
Really at the very beginning.
It's really at the very beginning in the C class, so C class is kind of that, you got a little, yeah, so we only have two wrecking parks in C class and starts on page.
Can you hear me now, Jessica?
We can, thank you.
Thank you, I'm using the county system today and it's a little different than what I, I normally work with, so I apologize. Again, I'm Erica Jackson Matthews, I'm the Chief of Planning and Construction for the Department of Recreation and Parks and thanks for having us today. Uh the first project is the Agricultural Preservation Program, this project provides funding for three county and state programs available to landowners. Who wish to preserve and protect their agricultural land and woodlands for future development while continuing to own the land. To date, a hundred and fifty-three landowners have chosen to do so while preserving nearly fourteen thousand acres in Anarondo County. This is a multi-year project and this request is consistent with previous allocation and extends this project to fiscal twenty-seven. Rural Legacy?
Sorry, I missed my cue there, so I'm gonna kill you the title and the page number to give Erica a chance to breathe, so the next one is Rural Legacy Program. Which is on page eleven in your C class.
The Rural Legacy Program can, created in nineteen ninety-eight was developed to protect all natural resources with the focus on stream buffers. Wetlands, forested land and agricultural land, the department did not apply for any new funding, so no appropriation is needed for fiscal twenty-two. There is no grant to support it, out-years were added and represent a tip, a typical funding request.
And now we're gonna jump to our P class, which is on page seventy and then from there, it's gonna be a page-turning exercise through each one of our. P-class projects, so we're gonna start off with South Shore Trail on page seventy.
The fiscal twenty-two request would allow us to begin construction of Phase Two, which is from Bon Air Drive to Annapolis Road near Sappleton Station. And continue the design of Phase Four, which is from the Eisenhower Golf Course to Waterbury Road. The increase in fiscal twenty-two reflects current estimates and efforts, there is no request for funding in fiscal twenty-three. As the project will be in either design for Phase Four or construction of Phase Two. In fiscal year twenty-four, funding would be used to design Phase Three and begin construction of Phase Four. There is no request for fiscal twenty-five as we will be in construction on Phase Four and the design of Phase Three. Will be underway using previously allocated funds, Phase Three would be constructed in fiscal twenty-six.
So when Erica's talking about the phases, I know sometimes we can get lost in the words a little bit, if you look at your project page. For the South Shore Trail, you will see that each one of the phases are defined, so. Um when you, when she talks about which phase we're in construction, you can cross-reference it to see the part of the trail that that means, so for instance. When she talked about um the Phase Three uh design, she's talking about the part that goes from Biscayne to Eisenhower Golf Course. Just so that you can marry up our terminology with the budget book, that might help a little bit. Uh next project is the WBNA Trail on page seventy-one.
There is no funding requested for fiscal twenty-two, the bridge construction, I'm sorry, the bridge crossing construction will be completed with prior allocations. Out-year funding will be used to prepare a feasibility study to complete Phase Four from Watch Apple to South Shore Phase Two. Programming for this project beyond fiscal twenty-three was added, we would also begin the design of right-of-way, I'm sorry, we would also begin the design. Right-of-way acquisition and permitting associated with the remainder of Phase Four in fiscal twenty-four. In fiscal twenty-five, we intend to apply for a grant that will be applied to our fiscal twenty-six budget to be used toward the construction of Phase Four. The remainder of the construction funds will be requested in fiscal twenty-seven when construction is slated to begin.
Next project is Greenways, Parkland and Open Space on page seventy-two.
This is the account where the department acquires new property, we have evaluated over twenty-two properties in twenty-twenty. And are looking to purchase six new properties with our remaining funds, we are requesting three million seven hundred seventy-five thousand dollars for this. And a reduction to two million seven hundred seventy-five thousand for the foreseeable years. This reflects two million seven hundred seventy-five thousand in funding from P O, Program Open Space. Plus one million dollar in county funds for land conservation efforts, the one million in county funding. Will be used to expand greenways and meet the preservation goals detailed in the Green Infrastructure Plan and the LP PRP. Future years, we will continue to purchase land based on the state POS projections plus five percent non-POS expenses and five percent overhead. This also extends the request to, of the project through fiscal twenty-seven.
So on the operating side of this project, internally, we have a uh process in which anytime property comes to the department. To look at in consideration, we will research that property uh looking at the assessed value, its proximity to other parks. Whether it falls in any of the layers of our greenways or park projects, if it's an extension to something. Or if it's just a piece of property that makes sense from a preservation or cultivation. Um then we review all of those properties, we might find a piece of property is really desirable, but then not have the money to buy it. So then it ends up becoming part of our larger acquisition list to, for future funding and future leverage of POS, so many of you. Have communicated to the department through your constituent property of interest and so we review all of those properties, so there is, just because there's not enough. Funding, we don't ignore those property interests, we give them ratings and we have that in an internal process so that we can continue to have them on the radar. As we move forward, I think yesterday you heard the Board of Education talk about the partnership they have with us, when they have properties of interest for future schooling. We've really tried to coordinate those efforts so that we can maximize the use of public property, that it's not bought just for one purpose. But is it something that we can put a park on and a future school site type of thing, so. Next project is Facility Lighting on page seventy-three.
This project is an ongoing multi-year project to repair, replace or install new lighting systems for court games. And athletic fields within county parks or school properties to accommodate existing and expanded play. This year, we are completing replacement lighting for two baseball fields and adding new lights to one baseball field at Rock Creek. And installing new lights at Deal Tracy, for fiscal twenty-two, the list includes lighting one multi-purpose field at Cochran Middle School with the Board of Ed approval. New lights on one baseball field at Biscayne and replacement lighting at Botkin and if funds allow, new lighting at Fairing Bay Brook. This request is consistent with our previous requests, this level of funding will enable us to complete three to four ye- three to four fields per year. This also extends the project to fiscal twenty-seven.
Next project is Recreation and Parks Project Planning on page seventy-four.
This is an ongoing multi-year project that allows the department to explore the feasibility of potential projects. In fiscal twenty-one, we're completing the master plans for Jug Bay and the Forney Bacon Ridge Property. The update to our Land Preservation, Parks and Recreation Plan, also known as the LP PRP. Is due in, that is due in twenty-twenty-two is also underway, the survey is still open for public comment until May fifteenth. We're also completing the assessment of the South Shore Ranger Station, this request varies based on the number and the complexities of the studies that we need to complete. For fiscal twenty-two, we are requesting six hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars to complete planning studies. We would like to complete the conditions assessment for the Grisham Property, expand the indoor sports complex scope to include the use of vacant big box stores. Completing a water access study on Valentine Creek and complete a planning study for the unprogrammed parks. Those parks to be studied would include the Crownsville Area Park, which is off of General's Highway, Reba Area Park, Central Area Park. Reese Road, Crofton Park and the Pumping Park, the out-year request will be determined based on the needs of the department at that time.
Page seventy-five, School Outdoor Recreation Facilities.
The project list is forthcoming from schools and this year's request is consistent with previous years, this request extends the funding request until fiscal twenty-seven.
Next project is Shoreline Evasion Control, page seventy-six.
This project seeks to preserve the county's investment of waterfront properties, the remainder of the funds for fiscal twenty-one will be used to complete the Fort Smallwood. Base Two and Base Three Shoreline Improvements as well as the improvements at Spriggs Farm. Improvements to Mayo Beach Shoreline are currently under design, the request for twenty-two is to construct the Mayo Shoreline Improvements. We would also begin designing the Lake Waterford dredging and shoreline improvements and the improvements to stabilize Hancock's Resolution. In fiscal twenty-three, we anticipate the construction of the Lake Waterford and Hancock's Improvements. Fiscal twenty-four includes the design of the Quiet Waters Retreat Shoreline and we intend to construct those improvements in fiscal twenty-six. And to go back to answer Councilman Volkey's question, we completed the Lake Waterford dredging study in March. And it's a very complicated, I mean, it's a very complicated problem. Um and we, as Jessica indicated, we are working with DPW, their dredging team, as well as Eric Michelson and the WP RP team. To come up with a holistic approach to resolve the issue.
Next project is Park Renovation on page seventy-seven, so I know many of you are familiar with this project, this is an ongoing multi-year project. But last year, we got a little less than seven million dollars, uh we have a huge backlog in park renovation and the. The department's priority is to try to take care of what we own um at such a pace rather than building new stuff, so. In Park Reno, you see things like install restrooms, updating restrooms, replacing pavilions. Um the boardwalk at, say, Jug Bay for, for hiking, updating all of our playgrounds, whether it's at a regional park or a community park. Uh repairing some of our existing structures uh including the rehabilitation of the Sawmill Skate Park. Uh things like our park improvements at General's Highway Park, so these are a lot of what your constituents bring forward to. The department as needs and wants that fall into this kind of catch-all project where we try to do as much as we can. With the allocation that's provided, this project is also our safety net, so when something breaks that we didn't anticipate for. And it's nowhere else in the capital project, this is where we fix it, so if a bridge breaks, or is no longer passable, is unsafe. If a playground is no longer safe for the children to play on, that's gonna take precedence over all of our lists of priorities, so. What ends up happening is we, we have a plan, we try to stick to the plan and we procure as much as we can in the beginning of the fiscal year. Holding this little pot of money for the unknown and at the end of the fiscal year, we then try to get as much as we can done as the plan. But we never really fully get to the bottom of the plans, so when you hear me talk about backlog, that's what can continue that backlog is that other things. Take the precedence over what's in the plan and we never will really be able to catch up, but. The additional monies that this council has supported has helped us out tremendously with being able to trip away at some of the. Larger requests and larger issues in the parks while still fixing the park benches and the trash cans and the smaller things. So this is really, really important to us, it is a capital project, but it is administered as if it's on the operating side. It's a lot of purchase orders and a lot of contracts and a lot of back and forth with multiple departments, so we're trying to speed up that process. We've been working really hard with Christine Romans and Central Services on the procurement side, DPW has to do their approvals on here, so we're really. Trying to speed up how quickly we can react, so it doesn't take a year to get something done, but we can do it more immediately, so. Um that's our request for twenty-two at seven million dollars, the out-years are reduced to three point five, but I'm sure you're gonna hear us. Next year, talk about the need of a higher amount and I promise you that we will continue to spend it. In the most effective and efficient way that we can to cross over every district in the county and to serve all the residents of the county. Because this is probably the most in-demand uh project that we have. Next project is Hancock's Historical Site, page seventy-eight.
The Visitor Center is currently in performance, the request for a hundred thousand dollars coupled with the Visitor Center's remaining construction money. Will be used to complete repairs to the other buildings on site, this effort would include repairs to the main house, including replacing the rotting floorboards. ADA improvements, repairs to the kitchen roof, the cornhouse roof repair, various windows and door repairs. And replacement pest control and painting.
Rodneck Trail, page seventy-nine.
This project has gained momentum over the last two years, Phases One and Two are complete, Phase Four was completed by the DPW's Department of Highways. Phase One, B, Five and Three are currently in design and permitting, the increase in fiscal twenty-two reflects current estimates and efforts. This request for additional funding has resulted from the change in design to include broadwalks in wetland areas to review, to reduce environmental impacts. We anticipated, we anticipate being in construction on the remaining phases this summer, this fall, with completion of all. Of the last three phases by twenty-twenty-three, this would complete the spine of the Brodneck Trail from College Parkway to Sandy Point Park.
Next project, Peninsula Park Expansion, page eighty.
Under this project, the park will be expanded to include two new baseball diamonds, parking in an open space area that can be used as a multi-purpose field. This project is currently in design and we have no request for fiscal twenty-two and the fiscal twenty-three funding request will be used for the construction of the park's improvements.
Facility Irrigation, page eighty-one.
This is a multi-year program to install and repair wells and irrigation throughout the park system. This request is consistent with previous years and has no changes in the out-years, this request also extends the request to fiscal twenty-seven.
Wait, Small Raid, page eighty-two.
A master plan for the park was completed in October twenty-two thousand and nine. Since then, the department has worked to implement this plan. The current work is listed under Phase Two of the Master Plan. This work includes the new conference station with all-season restrooms and a concession stand, new parking, a new maintenance building for county staff, and renovations to the barracks to upgrade the office space and to create a visitor center. Design and permitting of Phase Two is underway. This funding request reflects a balance of the design and construction money needed to complete Phase Two A. The funding for the out-years is for the completion of Phase Two B, which is the barracks. The funding was moved from fiscal twenty-three to twenty-three, I'm sorry, from twenty-four to twenty-three based on current schedules. The Weinberg Park, which is located in the Master Plan for Fort Smallwood, will be determined in future years.
Loopers Park Improvement, page eighty-three.
This project is complete. This project reflects a refund of ten thousand dollars in bond money.
Northwest Area Park Improvements, page eighty-four.
This is an ongoing multi-year project that is funded by the Video Lottery Impact Aid Money. The full project list totaling one point eight million includes constructing a new turf at Joe Cannon Stadium, pathway paving at Jessa Park, new netting on Field Four First Base Side, and a second storage set at Severn Danza, irrigating the multi-purpose field and expanding the parking at Queenstown.
Matthews Town Hyman's Park Improvement, page eighty-five.
This project is in performance, and this reflects a refund of unencumbered funding.
Water Access Facilities, page eighty-six.
This is a multi-year project that has been extended until fiscal twenty-seven. For fiscal twenty-two, we're asking to complete the design and construction of the Green Haven Wharf and the Galesville Pier. The department is continuing to seek a location for a boathouse for the rowing community. The out-year funding request will be revised to reflect the design and construction cost for other projects as they are identified by stakeholders and the general public. Again, this project was extended until fiscal twenty-seven.
North Arundel Swim Center Improvement, page eighty-seven.
We are requesting funding in fiscal twenty-two to design a splash pad at this location with construction planned for fiscal twenty-four.
Eisenhower Golf Course, page eighty-eight.
The golf course is now reopened, and we anticipate a greater demand for use at the site. In addition to golf activities, the site can be used for community initiatives. The clubhouse is needed to move the operations out of a trailer into a more permanent building. This building would allow us to host tournaments and other revenue generating in events. The facility could also be used for programs like PGA Hope, Hook a Kid on Golf, Summer Youth Day Camp, Weekend Programs, and Introducing More People to the Game of Golf. Indoor programming would be available during inclement weather and winter months. To provide a better experience and to generate additional revenue to support the golf course, we are requesting money to begin the design of the new clubhouse in fiscal twenty-two.
Socks Park Improvement, page eighty-nine.
The fiscal twenty-two request reflects the current engineer's estimates to the construction of the park improvement. This project is out to bid and assuming favorable bids, construction is slated to begin summer of twenty-twenty-one.
Carsworth, page ninety.
The wharf has been completed and is in performance. Feasibility studies to expand parking will begin this spring using the remaining funds. If the studies result in a favorable solution, we anticipate constructing the expanding parking lot in fiscal twenty-three.
Glen Bernie Ice, page ninety-one.
The fiscal twenty-two request reflects the current engineer's estimates to fully fund the construction of the improvements. The project is about a month away from going out to bid, and assuming favorable bids, construction will also begin in summer of twenty-twenty-one.
London Town Parking, page ninety-two.
This project is in performance. This reflects a refund of unencumbered general bonds.
Brooklyn Park Complex, page ninety-three.
The funding request for fiscal twenty-two reflects the additional design money resulting from a change order for the site to be converted to a high school facility in the future at the request of the Board of Education. Phase two's construction money was removed from fiscal twenty-three. Construction is slated to begin summer of fall of twenty-twenty-one.
Trails Resurfacing, page ninety-four.
This is an ongoing maintenance of our trails in the parks. This multi-year request is for three hundred thousand dollars and is consistent with previous years. This also extends the request to fiscal twenty-seven.
Brooklyn Heights Teen Center, page ninety-five.
The fiscal twenty-two request is to complete the design of park improvements, including an adaptive baseball field in the teen center. The request for construction funds for the park improvements has been shifted to fiscal twenty-three. The Anarondo County Partnership for Children, Youth, and Family is still seeking grant funding for the teen center construction, which is anticipated in fiscal twenty-four.
West County Swim Center, page ninety-six.
With the selection of Provinces Park as the location for the swim center, a request to begin the design has been submitted to DPW. The fiscal twenty-two request is the balance needed to design a thirty million dollar facility. Construction funding will be requested in fiscal twenty-four and twenty-five.
Deal Community Park, page ninety-seven.
This project is underway and proposes the design and construction of a community park on the twelve-acre former wellness property on Maryland two fifty-six. Facilities will include, but not be limited to, pathways, picnic pavilions, a sand volleyball court, playgrounds, restrooms, and possible court games, all subject to the public master plan process. The master plan process for the park is currently underway, and we're meeting with the stakeholders before we bring it to the full public. The request for fiscal twenty-two includes both design and construction funding. Once the master plan process is completed, we will begin and complete the park's design and permitting, and then proceed to construction.
This is the part where I'm supposed to wake everybody up. We have five more projects left, and these are five new projects. So everything Erica just went through had some sort of funding in the previous year, but now has additional funding in the out-years or the current year is different than what was in the program. What you're going to hear about in the next five projects are brand-new projects that are included in the FY twenty-two budget. Most of them are still in the planning process, but Erica's going to give you a little overview of exactly what we're trying to do in there and what our plan is. So ADA compliance implementation, page ninety-eight.
An accessibility audit was completed for the department's facilities under P four-five-two-five-four-five. The work included identifying barriers and inadequacies in all of our parks and facilities where the public engages in program services or activities. The accessibility assessment analyzed one hundred and thirty-six parks and one hundred and ninety-three recreational facilities, which also include buildings for compliance with the federal accessibility standards, the state's accessibility code, and the Title II Program Access Requirement. Approximately two thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight deficiencies were identified that pose a physical or communication barriers for people with disabilities to successfully participate or benefit from the program's services or activities within the park or recreation facility. Corrective actions to improve access for people with disabilities are estimated at seven point eight million dollars, seventy percent of which are associated with critical barrier removal necessary to achieve program access under Title II of the ADA. The department is currently preparing an implementation strategy to address the items in this report. We're going to review each council district to ensure that each district has a variety of accessible amenities. A database will be used to track our progress in correcting the items. The department plans to divide the work into three categories to address the budget limitations of this project and incorporate the improvements in the department's operating and capital budgets. Items that are routine maintenance and repair work, such as the inclusion of accessible picnic tables and trashcans, will be addressed under the department's operational budget, and non-compliant items replaced with compliant ones. The second approach is incorporating the deficiencies into other standalone capital projects for park development and repair. Every new capital project will include the list of deficiencies identified in that park or inclusion with the plan development. The third element is this standalone capital project with dedicated funding, so it no longer has to compete with other departmental demands. The department will use this account to address items that might otherwise go unaddressed. An example of this would be the creation of a walkway to get to an amenity. This project would include design permitting and construction of the amenity, plus any stormwater management, sediment control, and related element associated with the corrective action. As this project will be a multi-year occurring project, we will seek funding for design and to construct improvements throughout the department's system until this list is resolved.
Next new project is the Odington Library Community Park on page ninety-nine.
The area being designated as Odington Neighborhood Park is located in Council District Four, just off of Maryland one seventy-five. The park site is a portion of Lot A platted as West County Regional Library. The majority of the lot is being utilized for the library and related parking. However, there is approximately one point three acres of land on the west side of the library parking lot that could accommodate some sort of passive recreational amenity. Concepts for Passive Community Park were completed under P four-five-two-five-four-six. The feasibility was was completed and resulted in three concept plans. The first one shows a dog park and an amphitheater. The second one is an amphitheater, or a third one where the bigger amenity would be the dog park. These concepts were permitted to, were, I'm sorry, were presented to the Odington Town Center Advisory Committee on September twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty, and they supported the project. The project is also consistent with the Odington Town Center Master Plan and the findings of the twenty-seventeen LP PRP. And this also supports the considerable population growth in West County. This is a new project, and we are requesting design money in fiscal twenty-two and construction money in fiscal twenty-four.
The next new project is the Jug Bay Environmental Educational Center on page one hundred.
This year, we're introducing a new project that would allow Jug Bay to expand its capabilities to provide environmental education, ecological research, and habitat stewardship. This work will result in a research station to house and serve scientists and students. It will also expand the current offering of educational programs at Jug Bay. Having a world-class research facility in the county's park system would be a major accomplishment for the department. This project proposes a field research center that would include a field research station, lodging cabins, a bath house, pier replacement trails, campground, demonstration farm, and the related infrastructure. We were awarded a nine hundred thou- a nine hundred thousand dollar grant from NOAA to help offset the cost of the project. This project will also generate revenue through the rental of the cabins in the facility. Current contract P four-two-five-two-five-one is for the completion of the master plan for this site and is currently underway. The master plan reflects the ultimate build-out of the center. However, at this junction, we are only requesting funding to complete the design, permitting, and construction of the bath houses and overnight cabins in fiscal twenty-two.
Next new project is Quiet Waters Pike Rehab, page one oh-one.
Quiet Waters Park is a three hundred and sixty-acre regional park acquired in nineteen eighty-eight with nineteen acres identified as the Quiet Waters Retreat purchased in twenty nineteen. The park is in need of major renovations as detailed in the Conditions Assessment Report completed under P four-five-two-five-four-eight. This project would also correct corrected deficiencies identified in that report as well as those identified in the ADA study related to this park. In addition, the area commonly known as the Quiet Waters Retreat needs to be developed with park amenities. A master plan for the retreat needs to be completed and implemented to allow greater use of the property. This planning would also include the assessment of the boathouse and possible water access on Lowton Pond. The multi-year project is to complete the planning, design, permitting, and construction activities related to the renovation of the existing infrastructure and the retreat improvements. The fiscal twenty-two request is to complete the master plan for the retreat area, begin implementation of the improvements based on life and safety urgency, and design and construct the maintenance yard and improvements. In fiscal twenty-three, we anticipate continuing the renovations identified in fiscal twenty-two. We would also begin the design and permitting of the improvements to the retreat area. The out-years would follow a pattern of design and construction until all improvements on-site are made.
Last but not least, the Mayo Beach Pike Repairs Project on page one oh-two.
This project is to design and construct improvements to the existing twenty-three-acre Mayo Beach Park on Honeysuckle Drive. The purpose of this project is to assess the conditions of the various park structures, systems, and site amenities to improve functionality, safety, aesthetics, accessibility, reliability, wayfinding, and ADA. This project addresses any needed design and the subsequent assessment of existing repairs. I apologize, excuse me. This project, this is a major maintenance project. The roof leaks, there's rusty water, the electrical shortage at the complex, and the majority of it is not ADA accessible, and there are a range of other improvements that need to be made. The funding allocated in fiscal twenty-one under P five-eight-two-one-hundred allowed us to begin the study, which is currently underway. Depending on the complexity of all the challenges, design professionals may be needed, and small fixes can be made. This effort is requested for fiscal twenty-two. Fiscal twenty-three is the balance of the repair work. So there's no improvements, just once we get the report actually going out and making the repairs that are identified in the report.
So that concludes our cap- capital budget uh presentation. I am happy to give you Erica's notes in the form of a memos for those of you that didn't take good notes during the presentation, that'll give you all the details of what she told you. We think it's really important that you understand what projects are doing and exactly what we're asking for. Um as we put together the budget, it was really hard sometimes to prioritize these competing priorities and meet all the needs in all of your districts and try to do the best we can with the limited funding that's available. So with that said, is there any questions on the capital budget? We are here to answer them. Thank you both very much. Ms. Rodvian.
Uh thank you, Madam Chair, Lisa Rodvian, District Six. Um so thank you again for the presentation. It sounds like there's lots of awesome things going on. Um I'm just going to go straight to the punch and ask the questions that, the question that my constituents want to know the answer to is, when will they be able to put their feet um in some form, even if there's not all the amenities in the Quiet Waters Retreat? And if you don't know the answer, you can say you don't know the answer.
Uh unfortunately, right now, I don't have an answer for you. As you know, there's a partnership there with the Chesapeake Conservancy to build the um the educational centers that they want to do. And so that's going to take some time for them to get their buildings pulled together, as well as the master plan that you heard Erica talk about. So we've got um placeholders in the budget to start construction and to tie together the park with a new retreat, and we're hoping, just like we do right now, is that we can utilize the property while it's being developed or while the building's going on there in some way, shape, or form, whether it's guided tours, um you know, having some facilities over there while the other part of the park is closed for construction. Um so we definitely want to get people out to the retreat site sooner than later, but because of the partnership and the and the planning process, um it is going to take a couple of years to get it completed in its entirety. But we're hoping to be able to access it um sooner than later. Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Nathan Volkey, District Three. I'm actually going to ask a couple of questions. I I have a lot of them, but I am going to ask about one thing that did not get covered in the presentation, which is the Millersville Park Tennis Center. Can you update us on what's going on with that project?
Absolutely. So Millersville Tennis Center, uh the indoor component went out to bid to find a partner to fund, design, build, and operate the indoor tennis facilities. So that process has just wrapped up with a uh committee that reviewed the bids, making a recommendation to a successful bidder, and it's currently over in procurement uh to move forward. Once we have a selected bidder on that project, we will then start working on the preliminary construction of the outdoor facility, specifically the infrastructure necessary uh to build the indoor facility. So that's the status we have right now on Millersville. Does anyone else have questions? Mr. Volkey.
Hey, Madam Chair, I I keep going if nobody else wants to jump in. Um Nathan Volkey, District Three. Going to turf fields and regional parks. So it looks like there's no funding this year for any turf fields. Are we done on all the turf field building that we were planning to do?
So most of our turf fields, as 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 you discussed yesterday with the Board of Education, are on Board of Education properties, and they have been heavily funded through state bonds um and grant money. So in this FY twenty-two budget, there is no turf field funding requested as there are no state bonds or turf fields uh in the program. Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Jessica Hare, District Seven. Um thank you for your presentation today. I I really appreciate it. I am super excited to see um a couple of things in here, the the Jug Bay, uh the Mayo Repairs Project, the deal funding for construction. Those are great. I did have a question about the park renovation budget, because we've spoken a couple of times, and we heard at the District Seven Town Hall this need for some playground equipment um on Sands Road, and also about the repairs that really need to happen at Reva. And also about the repairs that really need to happen at Reva Park, because there are some real maintenance issues that are safety problems for kids. I looked in the appendix. I don't see either of those in there. Please tell me I missed them.
Uh, Erica can give you some details on those. They are all in our spreadsheet. She can give you an idea of where we're at with each individual. Uh, project, but I can assure you that the playground at Reva was just approved by procurement within the last couple of weeks. So we are uh very close to getting the vendor out there to finally repair that playground. And that can be an example of some things that just take longer in the process. Ms. Hare brought the playground slide. Uh, uh, I guess it was just completely broken at the bottom to our attention over a year ago. And it's taken us this long to get it through the procurement contract process to get the vendor to finally go into construction. So um I know that one is on the list to get done this summer, uh, probably within the next month. Because I've been babysitting it through the process to learn the process. Um, Erica, you want to speak a little bit more detail about some of the other projects in our in our spreadsheet?
Yes, Sands Road is listed in our. Park Reno update. I think that came in and I may have gotten that after I submitted the request, the last list to it. But on my sheet, I do have a new playground at Sands Road. I have the rehabilitation of the skate park at Sawmill. A new dog park at Overlook, improvements to General's Highway Park. Backin Park, improvements to the concession stand and a new playground at Sands are some of the bigger items that I do have listed under Park Reno.
Best answer ever. Thank you both.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Amanda Fiedler, District Five. Ms. Lays, I think I asked you about the Broadneck Trail more than anything else. Um. In the capital pages seventy-eight and seventy-nine, specifically seventy-eight. It says um that designing construction for some phases will be funded in a future budget. Could you run through what which phases those are? And um just for those members of the public who may be listening, why we don't see that funding in the out years in this book?
Sure. Erica, would you like to give the details on the phases and the level of funding that we have in this year's budget and the out years?
Yep. So phase one is open and that's completed, and that was from Green Holly Drive to College Parkway East. Phases one B and five are being worked on sort of together because they connect. So while sequentially, there are these numbers, sometimes we don't go in order because of proximity. So one B, which is currently under design, is from College Parkway to East Bayhead Road. Phase five, which is also in design, connects from Bayhead to Sandy Point Park. So that's why those two are coupled together. Those are both currently being reviewed. Um, they're at about seventy-five percent complete in design and permitting. And then we have phase three, which was at the C D stage, which means we're getting ready to put this out to bid. And that's from Peninsula Farm Road to Bayhead. The combination of the all five phases, which are one A, one B, two, three, four and five, complete the spine. Once the spine is done, there may be a couple of spurs that will take us from, say. A portion of the trail into sort of a neighborhood, and then we can connect neighborhoods to the spine. That's what the out years are. Our goal and our focus is to get the trail done, the spine done, which is why we're just sort of focused on that. And then once that's all done and settled down, and then we've got the other two trails going, which are South Shore and W B and A. We can just come back and start to pick up the little pieces once we get all the spines done for the major trail system.
Madam Chair, may I ask about a question? Um, Amanda Fiedler, District Five. So the spine has been fully funded up to this year and we're looking at more the tentacles.
Yes, for lack of a better term, the funding that we're requesting for this year lets us finish the spine. And then any out year funding, as you said, would be the tentacles.
Thank you.
Okay, tentacles. I have a new source of funds after this presentation. Mr. Volkey, I think you're next.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Nathan Volkey, District Three. Um, so following up on something else that we didn't talk about in the presentation. Um, the boat ramp development, which is P five, six, seven, five hundred. So there was no money in that. Um, I know that we've talked about water access and that's one of the things that has certainly been uh something that we get a lot of. Information from people about and testimony about. How does, wha- what's really the interplay between project P five, six, seven, four hundred and the boat ramp projects? I mean, are are they with like water access facilities? Are we just talking about kayak launches? Whereas with the boat ramps, we're actually talking about bigger facilities?
Sure. So the uh boat ramp project that Mr. Volkey is speaking on is on page one ten. Uh, and Erica can give you an update of where we are. There was no funding requested for FY twenty-two, but we can definitely update you on where we are right now.
So against Jessica stated, there was no funding request for fiscal twenty-two. The Marina survey was completed. However, none of the top tier options were viable. Um, we were trying to make a decision about moving into tier two. Sally Cove is currently under construction and we're about ninety-five percent done there at Sally Cove. And that will be a brand new boat ramp that will be launching this spring, summer. And then with the remaining funds, we will use that to complete a feasibility study for Boat Ramp at Beechwood. The issue with Beechwood is that it's gonna require significant dredging. So it's it's not our normal. It's not. The, you know, an ideal site for us, but we're gonna do a little bit more digging to see actually what those costs would look like. And is this, is this another option for us to pursue? Um, and again, as projects for boat ramps come up, we will add funding in fiscal twenty-three and twenty-seven. As projects are identified along Magathie South and Severn Rivers. And Councilman Volkey, as you stated, water access is just that. It's canoes, kayaks, put your feet in the water. Whereas Boat Ramp is full on like the trailer boat launches.
Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Allison Pickard, District Two. Um, I know from. District Two uh Park and Rec Assets, that most of, most of the projects that I'm. Uh, interested in fall into facility lighting and park renovations. Because I don't have any new assets coming my way necessarily. I want to make sure from um Rec and Parks' opinion. That the money in both those line items, you feel is sufficient. Um, and also I just wanna make, just wanna take a moment to look at that bottom line, the forty-seven million. Dollars of capital expenditures and look about where it's being spent around the county. And I just hope that we'll possibly get this third year of this council. Uh, maybe a bipartisan vote on this budget as we see who in the past have voted on the budget. And where all of our county dollars actually get spent. But I just, I do want to make sure that facility lighting and park renovation uh is adequately funded. In your opinion.
Absolutely, Ms. Pickard. And we do have um in your district, a heavy list of uh park renovations. And uh future lighting to provide the much-needed fields in your district. Um, and we are working to make sure that we are fair and equitable in the dispersment of those. Projects that sprinkle all over the county so that everybody uh has renovations and has new amenities. But especially in the districts where there's a needs assessment and there's a underrepresentation of facilities. That we can leverage our existing um budget to make sure that we take care of those needs the best that we can.
Thank you, Madam Chair, if I may. Um, Allison Pickard, I do want to thank Rec and Parks um. Wholeheartedly for the work that you've done over the last two years to improve uh field space. We don't have a lot of Bermuda, we don't have a lot of turf, but we've added lights where we can add lights just to extend the playing uh time. On school properties and I really do, my youth sports organizations appreciate it and I appreciate it. As we are fighting, fighting each other for field space for all of our youth athletics. And they do an amazing job out there, making sure our youth have um access to um athletics, keeping kids occupied. And in recreation is one of the most important things we can do to keep a healthy community. So I really do appreciate the work. I know that I am tenacious and sometimes I'm not always nice. But I think we're getting to a really good place and I just want to acknowledge that hard work. And you've heard, you, the the department has certainly heard uh the voices of my district and I really do appreciate it. So thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Jessica Hare, District Seven. Um, Ms. Lays, I just wanted to touch quickly on Beverly Triton. Uh, which of course is always a popular, popular topic of conversation. Uh, I have had some questions about the timing and and where we're at in that project specifically. And then I I see here that we are de-appropriating essentially four point six plus million dollars. And I assume that's because given the new scope of work that bids are coming in less expensive than we had hoped. Which is always a good thing. We had kind of touched on this last year where I felt like the dollar value last year was too high and wanted to cut some from the budget. So I'm hoping that's the answer, um, that it's just going to cost less than originally thought.
So, so the project that uh Ms. Hare asked about is Beverly Triton Nature Park on page one twelve. Um, and I'm gonna let Erica go through the details, but the reduction uh is primarily due to a second phase of that shoreline work. That after doing the first phase that we deemed did not need to be done at this time, so we put that out of the program. But Erica can give you the details as far as where we are and where we're headed this uh summer or fall, shall I say. It's all part of the Rubik's Cube of making sure that we have adequate parks over the summer of twenty twenty-one, especially since we are anticipating. Um, a large visitation while balancing a very large project at Beverly Triton um to renovate and. Uh, develop that park. So Erica, would you like to give them an update?
Yes, so there was no funding request for fiscal twenty-two as the phase one shoreline is completed. And the park improvements have been funded under previous appropriations. The park improvement project is currently out to bid. Um, we've had the pre-bid meeting and we're just waiting for the bids to come back. We anticipate moving into construction at Beverly Triton after Labor Day. So maybe literally the Tuesday after Labor Day, so we can keep it open as long as we possibly can. We are gonna be putting down some wood chips in a couple of areas that are just sort of muddy fields. So that we can have enough places to sort of park the cars. And as Jessica stated, the funding request for the phase two shoreline that was initially posed for fiscal twenty-two has been removed.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Pruski.
Good afternoon, Councilman Pruski, District Four. First of all, as always, great presentation. I appreciate Parks and Recs. Um, for obviously providing uh these updates. I just have one question. We talked about water access and maybe I missed it. I apologize. But Valentine Creek and also Riverwalk, uh, the Water Access Committee and several of the people keep emailing me on the status of those projects. Um, as you know, District Four does not have a lot of water um access to it. So obviously, when we talk about the ability for the public to enjoy water, um, that's one thing. So I didn't know if anybody had any updates on that, but that is something that uh folks have been, you know, kind of requesting. Thank you.
Uh, I don't have any details, but perhaps Erica has any uh properties that we've looked at specifically in District Four. The project that Mr. Pruski is asking about is the water access uh on page eighty-six for reference.
So actually, his water access study for Valentine Creek is actually gonna be, it's listed as one of our planning projects, which is on page seventy-four. So that's where we're actually going to be studying access on Valentine Creek. We did study in this last year, access on the Patuxent River Greenway, the Little Patuxent. And due to affordability, it's just, it's just not possible. I think that was our two to four million dollar parking lot for twenty spaces. Because of the expansive amount, like the distance from the parking lot to the water. We'd looked at two locations possibly to install them. There would have been tons of boardwalks that would have been needed. So that we wouldn't impact the wetlands, snaking it through and meandering it. So it it just became a. An affordability issue, which is why we didn't present that as a new project this year.
Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just piggybacking on what my colleague, Mr. Pruski, brought up about water access. Ms. Lays, you and I did have a a very good conversation that you, I'm just wondering if you wanted to share some of the details about. The challenges uh that come from uh finding water access, uh, public water access. I know it's something I'm very concerned about, although I haven't been on my paddleboard in a long time. But uh it is being in a landlocked district up here, basically. Um, so it is really helpful. It brings the conversation really um to the forefront. When you hear all the struggles of how we as a county develop water access for the public. Cause it is just like the, you know, the two, the two to four million dollar parking parking lot. So I don't know if you could expand on that just a little, just for for education for everybody. It might be helpful.
Absolutely. So obviously, we have a water access committee that is very passionate about. Having more water access sites throughout the county and the Department of Recreation and Parks shares that as a priority. Uh, in the amenities that we provide. However, sometimes it is difficult um to locate affordable waterfront. Properties that can provide that access and not all waterfront is accessible for a launch site or boat ramp. So even the properties that we already own that are on the water that from the exterior might look like the perfect spot to put a ramp. Or um a soft launch uh pad on aren't necessarily that easy to develop. Um, as they are typically in the critical area, they're not easy to assess. Um, they are costly to develop. And so like what Erica just described on the Patuxent is, you know, yes, we have waterfront. Yes, we could get a kayak in there. We have deep water and it looks perfect from an aerial picture. But the logistics of getting a parking lot and a pathway. Um, and actual access is is very costly and very expensive for the benefit of which. Uh, we would get as a county. Um, no different than having water access uh spots embedded in these communities like Coors Wharf. Which is in a residential community. It's one little roadway that goes down with very small parking area. To a beautiful pier and ramp, but it's really hard to get to. So if you're trailering something or you've got a kayak on your car, it's tight. Um, and not necessarily the best case scenario. So um we as a department are really looking at getting the best bang for our buck. Finding waterfront property that is easy to assess and doesn't cost the taxpayers. An exorbitant amount of money in order to have that point, because we want them to be used. So we don't want to build water access sites that are then going underutilized because they're difficult. They're difficult to access, they're difficult to get to, um, and that people aren't using. So we want to do it a little bit smarter. And some of the ideas I s- I shared with the councilwoman is looking at the way we acquire property, looking at possible. You know, easements versus ownership of property, looking to partner with some of the private sector that are on the water. The marinas and the individuals that already own and operate off of the water. So kind of thinking outside the box a little bit, um, so that we can have access points. Uh, without having a a large liability or a large effort. Uh, it's been a huge win for the county. We've got, I think, twenty-two soft launch into boat ramp. If you look at the access map, we are sprinkled all over the county. But when we look at the statistics of who's using those points, you'd be surprised at some of the newer access points that have been built. How underutilized they really are. So we need to make sure that when we're building them, that we're building them to be used and accessible. That we're not building them to just put a checkmark on the map saying here's another point, that we're building them smart. So uh we're committed to it. We're gonna continue to study it. Um, we are constantly looking at property and talking to partners to find that access point. And a great example is, you know, the boathouse that we uh brought up uh uh to publicly comment for Quiet Waters. Off of Hynna's Creek and just the logistics of why it didn't work there and why we reevaluated it. And said, you know what? That's not the best spot for the the boathouse. We'll keep looking for a better spot. We didn't abandon the idea of a boathouse or the rowing community need didn't go away. In fact, it's even more demand now with the schools wanting to have high school rowing teams. But we want to do it the right way. We don't want to just do it um because there's a lot of pressure and there's a lot of. Um, you know, timing or timeframe to get it done quickly. We want to do it right and we want to use taxpayer dollars efficiently. To access the water um in its entirety. So hopefully that's kind of the conversation I've had offline and it helps everybody understand that. You know, it's it's not in the back burner. It's something that we really are focused in on, but we're kind of changing our philosophy of how to go about it. So that we can make smarter decisions and and have them more utilized, uh, better bang for our buck. So I'm gonna step in. Um, Sarah Lacey, District One, I do want to follow up on that precise point.
of efficiently and fully using our resources, existing resources. I understand that Fort Smallwood Beach will be closed this summer. Is that correct?
Okay. Yes. So Erica, you want to give the timeline of Fort Smallwood real quick?
Yes. So the Fort Smallwood, there's three construction projects that are happening at Fort Smallwood this summer. So it's a lot happening. The first project that's happening is gonna start on May fifteenth and that's for the shoreline of Phase Two Reach Three. And that basically goes along the swimming beach area and we're gonna come in and make those repairs. While that's underway, we're gonna be continually moving, I guess that's west on, on the site. And we're moving to Phase Three Reach Two, which is sort of where the fishing area is and completing the shoreline improvements there. Those projects will start May fifteenth. It'll probably go through December, January of this winter. While that's underway, we're gonna start moving in with the new construction of the Phase Two improvements to Fort Smallwood. So that would include from the beach area where the current bath house is, the maintenance building, the demolition of all that and us moving further back to install the new maintenance barn. So that's sort of the construction timeline and our goal is to have that all reopened by next spring. So by, so it's, it's an aggressive schedule to get that done. But it's just sort of starting small with us closing the beach area. And then, you know, unfortunately, the beaches have to be closed during this period because it's permitted by the state. And there is a window that we have to be in the water and the window is from June fifteenth to December. So that is why unfortunately, the beach is closing in the summertime. Ideally, it's not what we would like, but we don't have any control over the state's timing.
So, so with that understanding, are we planning to open any other beaches in, you know, give greater access to any that might be normally closed during the day or only on certain days of the week or something like that to try to give comparable maximum access to our residents?
I don't believe that we are opening up anything else at Fort Smallwood. What will end up happening is over the summer, especially using this new year pass now system that I spoke about on the operating side is that when visitors can't access the beach there, they will be able to see what other beaches are available, not just Anaronda County beaches, the state beaches, things like Sandy Point, other counties, amenities and beaches to help redirect some of that traffic to going to another amenity. But unfortunately, yes, the, the, the beach, there will be a shortage of beaches in North County or swimming areas designated on the county side in North County while we do this much-needed shore erosion control project at the beach.
So my third, I guess, last question on that is, you know, thinking about all we've heard about Mayo Beach Park and the access limitations there with the traffic. And given that, I would expect there would be higher demand there for, for that beach. You know, at all our beaches this summer, just because of, you know, everyone's excited to get out after COVID, obviously. But also because we'll have some parks closed, like Fort Smallwood Beach. So if the app is in place, and I, I don't know what day you said that will be available, but has the department considered doing something in conjunction with that app where you could, for example, alleviate parking by setting up a parking lot and a, a bus loop system or a little shuttle system or something so that more people could access the park while you could keep the traffic and the cars out of the neighborhoods?
So, so we have a group that meets in the Mayo Peninsula on a monthly basis. We've talked about all kinds of alternatives to cutting down on the traffic without bringing those cars through the residential area. Remember that Mayo Beach hits capacity usually within the first hour that it opens. So it isn't necessarily the traffic that turns people away. It's the fact that Mayo Beach is significantly smaller than what we have up in Fort Smallwood. And the capacity of that park is, is significantly smaller. So bringing more people in, there's not the space there that we have in, in the Fort Smallwood Beach, first off, for the people. But there's also a concern that we don't want to busload people back and forth and have them be a bus schedule per se, when a lot of people just want to come for an hour or two and then, and then leave. So we, we've kind of looked at and waited the using other parking lots and bringing people in versus reservation system. But the visitations or the capacity is not going to change no matter how we bring people in. It's trying to curtail the traffic. And I will say that for the Mayo Peninsula, the idea that seems to work best for that scenario in dealing with the traffic and the overcrowding just right now is just knowing who's coming and having that reservation system. And so that's a pilot program for two thousand and twenty-one. It may not be successful. We might run into, you know, some snakes in the road. But we, we really do want to make sure that we provide access and that we allow as many people as we can to come to the beach without overcrowding the beach or causing more stress on the Mayo Peninsula beach amenity than, than what it can handle. So we have been working through the community at Fort Smallwood to kind of get a temperature for once that Fort Smallwood Beach closes, what do people do? And it's a very small percentage that we're actually expecting to get in the car and make that hike all the way to South County. We just don't think that they're all gonna shift to a different South County park. Actually, we think that they would either A, not go to the beach or B, they'll look at a beach that's closer to them, like Sandy Point or like something that's over on another county, over the county line. So I, we've looked at all of the different components to try to find that right balance. And until we get into the season, will we know whether our reservation system is fixing some of the operational problems at Mayo Beach? Will we know whether the closure of Fort Smallwood has brought more people to other amenities or other parks? So we'll kind of have to figure that out as we go in the summer. Thank you. Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. I appreciate that we moved the conversation to Fort Smallwood because I was gonna get there. So I have a question about the Phase Two A renovations to the park, specifically the maintenance concession stand, parking, all of that. So I did have the opportunity to attend with Wreckin' Parks back in December of last year, the community meeting, and heard loud and clear from the community that they were not pleased with the scope of what Wreckin' Parks was looking to do. Specifically, they thought that it was, you know, they didn't like the idea of more parking. They didn't think that another concession stand was necessary. I think largely everyone agreed that the maintenance building made sense and bathrooms are a huge thing that people would love to see. So in light of that, one, do we have another community meeting scheduled yet for when we're gonna update kind of where we are on things with this project? And two, if we're thinking about doing this, you know, within the next year, what is the scope at this point? Have we, have we cut the concession stand? Are we changing parking at all? What does that look like? Cause I've gotten a lot of questions about that.
Absolutely. So I, I know Erica is eager to answer because we've had a lot of conversations about it and your constituents have been very vocal. I, I want to kind of start off first before Erica dives into the specific components of this project. The, the process that Wreckin' Park has when we build a new amenity works very well. So it all starts off with things like the LPPIP and the five-year strategy of where are our needs? What is the public looking for as far as their priorities to our amenities? And then that rolls into either the acquisition of property or an existing park that can meet those needs as identified through like a master plan process and a lot of community input. And so the people that come out to our community meetings are usually very vocal, very passionate, but sometimes very tunnel vision onto one aspect of the project. And like Mr. Volkey pointed out, you know, you might have one or two very loud voices about something that they're opposed to where then we have, you know, thirty supportive voices that maybe aren't as loud. So we really have a tough job as a department of taking the temperature of the public input. And we take that responsibility very seriously because those loud voices, especially the opposition, they never go away. They will always show up. They will always voice their opinion. But it doesn't necessarily mean that they're always representing the majority of the users for the park. So this is our business. This is what Erica does. This is how the, the Capitol Division goes to these meetings. They put the plans out there and we want public input. We want to hear all the voices. We want to hear the yays, the knees, the kicking and the screaming and the pats on the back. But we do tend to get more input from opposition than we get from support. Even though the support is there, they tend to fall a little bit more silently. Anytime a project goes to public community meetings, all those comments come back to the department. All the questions come back to the department and then we have a period of time in which we respond. And part of that response sometimes is a compromise. And I can use Beverly Triton Shore Erosion is a perfect example where the first community meeting, when we put out the shoreline work that was going to be done, we spoke about tons of sand and material that would have to come down the road to the park in order to replenish the beach. And right away, people raised their hand and said, we don't want those trucks coming down. We don't want the heavy equipment through our neighborhood. We don't have the infrastructure. It's gonna do more damage to the subsidiary roads than the project is worth. So we kind of went back to the drawing board and says, is there a different way to do it? And even though it costs the project a little bit more money, we determined bringing heavy equipment in by barge would help ease some of the pain from the community. They were very supportive of the shoreline. They just didn't want the heavy equipment driving through their yard. So, so we changed up our, our process. We changed up the planning and we brought in the equipment through barge. It did have a cost implication that we were very transparent about and we took to the next community meeting and we got overwhelming support of it. So the community input is valuable and it does help us mold the project into what it becomes. With that prelude, Erica has met with the Fort Smallwood people and we have had a lot of conversations about parking, the conception of adding parking versus replacing parking, the overall footprint of the park and not adding to it, but enhancing it and discussions about the concession stand and the people that want it there and are demanding it and then the people that are vocal that are opposed to it. So Erica, would you like to give Mr. Volkey an update of where we are with the plan?
Yes. So we actually had a public meeting for Fort Smallwood on Monday night and we had thirteen panelists and we had five community members show up. So it wasn't a very heavily attended meeting. And we discussed the project and some of the questions that came up did come up about the Fort Smallwood project. The meeting minutes have been posted on our website from the last meeting with responses. In terms of the parking, we also, so that's, that's like a step back. When we talk about park capacity, typically we look at park capacity based on parking. So once the park is full, the park is full. There's no more, there's nowhere for anybody else to go into the park. There was questions about the traffic and what that would generate if we were to add additional parking. The people that are coming to Fort Smallwood Park are gonna keep coming to Fort Smallwood Park, whether there's parking or not parking. With that being said, the compromise or sort of the middle ground that we struck is that if you are looking at Fort Smallwood directly across in the same beach area, there's sort of this gravelly parking lot that's there now. And I think that's about ninety to ninety-three parking spaces and we're gonna remove that parking space and we're gonna turn that into grass picnic area. With that change, we're only adding about twenty-seven new parking spaces with the new parking lot that's being developed. We have worked with the Department of Public Works and their traffic engineering department and they've provided a memo with all the technical terms and I, I don't want to speak and, and, and misquote what it said, but we're in good shape. The other thing that we're looking at in terms of traffic, it becomes an operational issue is, do we get another VMS board and put that somewhere so that people know that the park is at capacity? So that's one of the other elements that we're looking into. The comfort station that's being built has not been scaled down. It still includes the family room, the family restrooms, ADA accessibility, the bathrooms and the concession stand. Those people that are using the concession stand on that end of the beach are not gonna go all the way to the other side of the beach. I mean, they'd have to get in their car and drive to where the smaller one is by the boat ramp. We think this will serve two totally different users in the park, which is why they're separate.
Mr. Volkey, do you have another question on Fort Smallwood or?
I do. I, I have, I have quite a few more on Fort Smallwood and then I have other questions too. So if other people need to jump in, that's fine, but I'm, I'm happy to follow up.
Well, I do, I might suggest as chair, since we've been going since nine AM, if, if you might focus on the questions that are perhaps most important to everyone, that would be greatly appreciated. We haven't taken any breaks, so just, I'm just saying, out of consideration for your fellow councilmembers, but please go ahead.
Certainly, thank you. So I just want to clarify something, Ms. Matthews, because I heard you say it and I, I already have gotten texts from constituents asking about this who are watching. The meeting that took place on Monday night, I'm looking at the ad on DPW's website or, or on the county's website, that was about Fort Smallwood Shoreline Phases One and Two. That was not actually about Phase Two A with the maintenance concession stand, right?
That is correct. It was for Phase Two A, it was for Phase Two and Three of the construction. But there were questions that were asked about the other project as well and we addressed those during that meeting as well.
Got it. But so when we had met with the community in December and they'd had a lot of concerns about this, the takeaway from that meeting was there would be another community meeting with a different plan, potentially some edits based on that one. When is that meeting taking place?
The only edit that we've made thus far has been the removal of the parking space. The next meeting that's on my schedule is for us to have the public meeting right before we go to construction.
Which would be when?
We hope to have this project. I just got the bid documents today. We're hoping to go to construction possibly in October of November. So then that public meeting would probably happen around September, October-ish.
Got it. I will keep following up with you directly about some of my other questions on this park. Madam Chair, if I may, I have a couple other questions.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So you had indicated that the Solly Cove, the Solly Cove Boat Ramp was almost done. One of the issues that I'd raised a couple of years ago about that project was if there was any overage in the budget on that, if we could look at potentially paving carbide road over there leading to that because I don't want to have this beautiful new amenity at the end of a road that makes it largely inaccessible. There's not a lot of sense in putting millions of dollars in a place where nobody's gonna use it, which is, you know, my concern. So you'd indicated that there was some money left over and it sounded like that money was gonna be rolled to a study on Beechwood Park and whether that would make sense for a ramp there. Is there money left over that we could use to do anything in terms of paving on that asset to make sure that it's used or fixing that road?
So there, there are two things happening here. Solly Cove has a budget that's already been established. That project is underway. The part that hasn't happened is that we are looking at the road. That's the last piece of where everybody thinks that it looks done. It's actually, we are assessing the road. For us to pave it and bring it up to DPW standards is extremely expensive. So what we're looking at doing now, because we're also in the critical area and it would require stormwater management and it would just grow. But there's tons, tons of material already down there if you've been down that road several times. So we're in the process now of getting a purchase order for us to do a tar and chip. So tar and chip is sort of the sweet spot where it's not a paved road, but it's something that's a little bit more compacted, a little bit more solid. It won't trigger us to go into these critical area requirements and you have a much thirtier road and it cuts down on the maintenance for us. Cause I mean, again, we have this, this out there now. And again, we've already said that once it's out there and once it's built, we will pay more attention to it. So this is the first step in us paying more attention to it.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Nathan Volkey, District Three. Ms. Matthews, that's an excellent answer. So thank you very much for that. I'm very pleased with that answer too. And with respect to Beechwood, so I'm very familiar with that site. It was just out there with the county executive about a week and a half ago for a ceremony out there. And that is when we talk about water access and Ms. Lays said, you know, putting something on a map and just checking it off. One of the problems with Beechwood is it is in some ways like that because it's a soft launch and you don't have much room to do anything there. I had mentioned to the county exec when we'd met probably about two years ago, year and a half ago, the idea of trying to clear out a little bit behind the parking area there so that it makes the launch easier for folks coming in with kayaks and other things that are on roofs to be able to take them down and use those. Is that something that we could look at in terms of adding? I don't know where you'd put it, you know, maybe it's in park rentals or something like that, but finding a way to just clear a little bit behind the parking area so that people can use that better? Cause that's, I, I hundred percent agree with you. We don't want to have these assets that are there that aren't being utilized fully.
We can certainly put that on our list of possible sites and, and take a look at whether it's something that we can squeeze into the existing project or something we can look at as a standalone in the water access.
Thanks very much.
Do any of my colleagues have any final questions for Recreation and Parks? Trying to make sure I don't know if we're all still here. Trying to make sure I don't know if we're all still here, but I know we still have a quorum. There's at least that. Okay, well, I think there are no more burning questions um and everyone knows how how to reach Recreation on Parks. So we will leave future conversations up to that. And thank you again very much for your very detailed, excellent presentation today and for all the work that you do in the county.
Thank you.
Great day. Okay, um is there any other business to be brought before the county council at this time? Seeing and hearing none, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Councilwoman Pruski.
Second, Allison Pickard.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. The county council is adjourned until nine AM on Thursday, May sixth, two thousand and twenty-one. Please continue to check the county website for important information and updates. Be safe out there. Take care.